Live.
We are live.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
No?
Just like, you go on there.
You go along in three hours?
No.
No.
Two mile walk in the woods today.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, go.
Okay. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is the snow date of our regular scheduled meeting of the, uh, Wareham School Committee. Uh, it was, it's January twenty seventh. Uh, we called off the meeting on the twenty sixth, uh, because of inclement weather conditions. Uh, and we had an opportunity this time, um, to, uh, put up a snow date. So, um, without further ado, I'd like to call the meeting to order and have any public participation. If you have public participation, please go to that table and identify yourself. Having no public participation, we'll move on. Dr. Rubenovich, good news.
Yes, I have two, uh, pieces of good news. Um, first has to do with the CARE program, which is a grant-funded program. Um, it's called the Century Twenty-One Grant. Um, and it runs an after-school program for the elementary schools and Wareham Middle School. They had a demonstration of students' work, um, here on, I believe it was Monday night. It seemed so long ago, but, um, they had a movie, um, that was absolutely, um, it was hilarious. Um, well done, um, and the students, um, produced the whole thing, took all the video, was all, um, the advisor did some editing of it, uh, and, uh, so that was very nice to see. They had a play after that, um, that was a parody of, um, The Soap Opera's. And, uh, they did a little, um, the garden, one of the classes has to do with, uh, gardening. Um, did something with cranberries. I guess they are building a couple of demonstration cranberry, um, bogs, um, in the quadrangle at the middle school. And, um, so it's a, they were selling these little, um, cranberry pizzas. Um, so all of that was very nice to see the student work and to be here and to appreciate it. And, uh, the director of the program has told me that she's very happy that I came to see the students' work. So that's the first piece of good news. Um, the second one has to do with a, I believe we put a copy of this in your package. Um, this is from, uh, ESE, or the Elementary and Secondary, um, Education, or DESI known as the department. Uh, "It is a pleasure to write this note of thanks on behalf of the ESE Data Collection Office. Your district is one of the first to complete the October two thousand and ten SIMS, APMS, and new stu- student course schedule collection. I know this is a very complex collection that requires a tremendous amount of work and collaboration. You are, uh, we are very appreciative of your staff, Teresa Griffin, who worked to get the job done. Thank you for your support of their work sincerely, Blean Betancourt, Manager Data Collection." And we sent this to, um, all of the secretaries, um, in the school system because it is an amazing amount of work. Um, when this first started, the data collection had to do with, you know, basically people's name, their address, maybe their race. Uh, now there are, I'm gonna say a hundred different collections that they do, including every course that they teach. Um, so that when they look at a teacher and the courses they teach and their certifications in ELAR, they are now able to cross-reference them and call us and ask us questions when they find that a teacher may teach a single course out of their certification area. So, um, again, Wareham was one of the first to complete this and, um, our data collection, uh, Teresa Griffin, um, and Terry D. Filippo, the Coordinator of Technology, and all of the secretaries have worked very hard, uh, to get this done. So, that's another piece of good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any good news?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Fons?
Um, I just want to comment on Brenda Ekstrom's taking the lead for Stop the Violence. I think it's talking about a rally and all of that. And a lot of times we don't agree and disagree on different things, uh, but I, I'm a hundred percent behind this. One of the things that, that Brenda talked about was, uh, the schools getting involved because of what's going on. It goes all the way back to Scotty Montero, the, uh, the tragic death of him getting shot. So it's time that we step up. So I wanna commend Brenda for taking the lead and, and, um, let her know that, you know, all my life I've been involved with the youth and I like to, uh, reach out and try to help her, um, in any organization to, um, to get this going because it's time to put any disagreements or whatever aside and step up to the plate. We've gotta target the, the, uh, middle school. I think that's the age where kids, uh, you know, they're watching these movies with guns and knives, right up to the high school. So I think it's an excellent idea. The police department is gonna be involved and, um, hopefully could sit down and talk to the superintendent and the principals and, and try to get the schools involved in, in, uh, some type of way. Uh, but that was, uh, my point. I just wanna, uh, commend her on taking the, the lead to get this organized.
Thank you. Uh, I don't think there's anyone that disagrees with that, so, uh, we'll do what, whatever we can. Anyone else with good news? It's not to know it right now.
Give it a minute.
Report of the Chair. Uh, I'm not gonna prolong the meeting because, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Minutes, I'm, thank you. Uh, approve the minutes of January twelfth. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Um.
Jeff?
Just one correction. Um, in, um, enlisting the members of the subcommittee, Mr. Schneider's name is misspelled.
Okay.
Um, it, I believe, he's here, so he could tell me if I've got it wrong, but I believe it's S.C.H.N.E.I.D.E.R.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, any other corrections? All right, so, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, with myself and Rachel absent from the meeting, is it right that she?
Oh, I shouldn't have done that. You're right, I'm sorry. I was looking at both minutes at the time, sorry.
Do you wanna withdraw your?
Yeah.
Motion? All right, I'll entertain a motion as corrected to approve the minutes of January twelfth.
So moved.
Second. As amended.
I have a motion and a second as amended. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Aye.
So it is three zero two. Uh, now we'll go to the minutes of January nineteenth?
Mr. Chairman?
Motion? Yes?
Um, I could be wrong, but I remember, I only remember three members of the Board of Selectmen being there that night, and it looks like the vote is four zero zero. Is, is my memory the same as everybody else's? There were only three?
On what, what were you talking about?
The nineteenth?
Yeah.
On their motion for the school building assistance?
There were four.
There were four.
Um, Jane Donahue was on vacation, so four members were here.
Mr. Cruz was here.
At the end, one left early.
Mr. Ekstrom was here.
But at the time that they took the vote, for some reason, I remember.
Oh, no, he's correct.
Kara was gone.
Yep.
So I think the correct vote is three zero zero.
You're right.
That's, thank you very much. I didn't know that either. I didn't realize that. You're very observant, do you know that?
I have my senior moments, too.
I have one, my, yeah. Um, okay, so we'll, uh, cor- make that correction. Uh, any other, uh, problems with the minutes of the nineteenth?
We just have to correct that it's, uh, January nineteenth of two thousand and eleven.
I didn't even notice that.
That's correct on the.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero. Okay, moving right along. Report of the Chair, as I said before, I'm not going to prolong the meeting. Uh, I just wanna comment on the tone of the last meeting that we had, uh, between the, um, uh, guests for the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And I, I think, uh, it was a, um, a conciliatory tone. I think that we, uh, made some very, very important points, and I think that some good things will probably emanate from that meeting. So, um, while I was lukewarm, um, to make it a mandate, um, I, I feel that it was the right thing to do, and, uh, I, I think it went real well. So I, with that being said, um, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rubenovich for his report.
Thank you, Dr. Sylvia. Um, the only thing that I have, um, I'll first check Michelle's notes here to see if, um, there's anything else. But the only thing I believe I have is that we attended a, um, the Budget Subcommittee of the, uh, School Committee, attended a meeting, um.
When was that?
That was on Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Monday?
It was either Monday or Tuesday. We'll have to look back at Tuesday.
That doesn't matter, go ahead.
It was Tuesday at one o'clock.
Okay. And, um, that meeting emanated because there was a conversation at the end of last, at the public hearing. Um, there was a discussion held about, um, getting together a group of people to form an ad hoc committee. And so the town administrator, um, the town accountant, um, three members of the Board of Selectmen, um, our Budget Subcommittee, um, with two members of the School Committee and myself, and two members of the FinCom, um, and the town moderator.
Just, just for clarification, there was a meeting of the Budget Subcommittee Tuesday at one o'clock.
Okay.
The meeting to which you're referring was not a meeting of the Budget Subcommittee.
All right, but members of the Budget Subcommittee?
That's correct.
Three out of four of us attended.
And, and that was, and that was Monday at ten o'clock.
Thank you. And, um, at that discussion, um, the, um, it was my feeling that the sentiment of the group was that each, um, a representative from each of the boards would go back and ask, um, for the board to consider, um, approving the formation of an ad hoc Budget Subcommittee and that two members be assigned to attend, um, so that we would have two members of FinCom, two members of the School Board, two members of the Board of Selectmen, um, the town administrator, and the superintendent, and the town moderator. That was what was discussed at that meeting. And so, um, what I'd like to propose is whether or not we need to discuss it, but I'd like to, uh, look for a motion, I guess, to, um, approve the formation of this ad hoc and, uh, for you to send two representatives to it.
So this emanated basically from that meeting on Monday, so, uh, they're looking for, they're looking for a, uh, a commitment from us, one way or the other, and so that's.
Participation.
Okay. Um, so I, that, that, given the fact that we were supposed to have this meeting yesterday, and this is a, a snow date, I think that that would be, would fall within the guidelines of, um, new business 'cause it's, it's something that requires, uh, action, uh, right away. So, um, why don't we, uh, take that up on the new business and we'll discuss it then? Okay? Um, with, the student representative is not here. Our recommendations to the Policy Review Committee.
Do you want me to start since there was, where we were from last time?
Yeah, there's a couple meetings that this kind of encompassed, so we'll go through each one, I guess.
The last time we were together, there were, um, policies that were up for approval by the School Committee, but we tabled it, and so we had an opportunity to have more members here. Um, those include the State Ethic, Conflict of Interest, um, Crisis Response, and the Transportation of Emergency Safety and Crisis Response. The, Dr. Rubenovich, I think that in our last meeting, we decided to still table the transportation of, um, drivers' children until we had the full policy in front of us. Um, we did get the recommendation back from Council that the language that we did put in there was approved. Um, but we still wanted the full policy for the group to be able, for the School Committee to review before we, we, um, wrote it on that. So I'm gonna ask for that one again to be held up until the next meeting.
We have it, was it not?
It is in the packet.
Oh, goodness.
It was in the packet, we have it.
Is it in the line? I'm gonna spell the other one. Missed it, sorry about that. Okay.
No, we all have it.
All right, so we'll start off with the State Ethics and Conflict of Interest. Um, I think I said as, at the, um, last meeting, um, this had two changes. One, um, to remove the word immediate, uh, family members, and the other one was to delete the last sentence of the paragraph, um, of, of the last paragraph. Do you wanna take, um, the vote on each one?
Yeah, we'll take them one at a time.
Okay. Were there any questions on the State Ethic policy? Conflict of Interest?
Jeff?
Um, as I said, uh, a week ago, or two weeks ago? Sorry. Uh, two weeks ago, I'm uncomfortable with the last paragraph. And, um, my, and by the way, in the penultimate paragraph, I think the language should be more like, "At no time may any administrator be," I think you need a "be" responsible to insert the word "be." And for the supervision and/or evaluation of an employee, I assume it's meant to be "being" directly related to him or her. Otherwise, the language doesn't work. But putting that aside, the last paragraph, even though the law says that School Committee cannot be involved in the, in the hiring, firing, management of school employees, so in a sense, this whole paragraph is, is probably not necessary. Nevertheless, we're talking about the, the appearance of any possible conflict. So I can, I can live with this, but I think we should delete the word administrator from that first sentence because that's really covered in the penultimate paragraph, which means there you can't have supervision and evaluation, um, involving, and anybody directly related to, to the administrator. So I just, I just think it's inappropriate for a principal of one school to not be able to have a family member in another school where the whole line of, of supervision is entirely different. So that's a long way of saying I would like to delete "or administrator" from the final paragraph.
Are you making an amendment?
I'm proposing an amendment, yes.
You've heard the amendment to delete the word administrator in the last paragraph. Uh, certainly we have the right to do that. Uh, is there a second to Mr. Swett's amendment?
Second.
I have a second. Uh, any discussion on the amendment? Jeff?
Mr. Swett, can you just clarify penultimate for our listening audience?
Um, forget about penultimate. The, the last paragraph is the issue. Okay? And by deleting "or administrator," what you're allowing is for a teacher in one school to be related to the administrator of another school. And while you would not want that teacher to be in the same school, that's covered under the next-to-last paragraph, which refer, which talks about supervision and evaluation of employees. So for that reason, I think we can eliminate the word, the two words "or administrator" in the final paragraph.
Mr. Swett, are you also adding the word "be" in pa- in the next-to-the-last paragraph? Is that part of your amendment?
I don't really like to get into language issues, but, but yes, I think we need the word "be" to be inserted in the, in between.
Is that part of your amendment?
Yeah, if the author doesn't mind. Um, so on the second line of the next-to-last paragraph, administrator "be responsible", and in the third line, evaluation of an employee being, being directly related to him or her. I think Michelle followed me at least. You got it? Thank you.
Dr. Rubenovich, I would ask you, um, if the deletion, I mean, I, I don't think that we have to go back to the Policy Review Committee with, you know, language changes, but, um, with the "or administrator," whether that does need to go back to the Policy Review to discuss?
No.
I don't, I don't believe so because.
We're the policymakers.
This is the Policy Board.
But I understand your concern, and if, and if this was discussed and specifically inserted.
It wasn't.
It wasn't specifically inserted?
No, it was part of the boilerplate, I think.
Right, there was, there was, there was no discussion one way or the other.
Okay, okay.
Um.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I know that we're the policy group, but I wouldn't wanna assume that the Policy Review Committee, that there would be members on there that would have an issue with an employee, um, being related to an administrator at any one of the schools. I don't think that they would, but I just wanna put that out there, um, being the first time on the Policy Review Committee, whether we think that down the line, that would be an issue if we didn't bring it back.
Anything else?
I, I, I wasn't at the meeting, I can't speak to it.
Well, that's, okay, that's why I'm asking anybody that has been at the Policy Review before.
I had a conversation with one of the members of the Policy Review Committee, um, who is in a, an assistant principal at a particular school. And, um, there was another assistant principal at a school who was having, um, some difficulty with this language because there is a niece who's graduated as a teacher, and basically this language says that that person cannot apply in this district. And, um, the person called me to say, "Is there anything we can do about it?" So I, I'm in favor of the amendment made by Mr. Swett because it does allow us, um, to find the best people.
Yes, I do think it's the right thing. It's only a procedure question, not whether this should happen or not. Okay, if that, um, I'm comfortable with the vote going forward then.
I, I do, Mr. Chairman, just one final comment. I do think that it's worth going back to them the next time you meet. Make sure they understand the change that was made.
Absolutely.
And if for any reason.
Come back to us.
They can always come back.
All right, so the most, um, the vote is on the motion, uh, the amendment.
Amendment.
Excuse me. Um, and the amendment, um, Michelle, can you kinda paraphrase for us? I know it's in the third, uh, next-to-the-last paragraph to insert the word "be" between administrator and responsible, is that correct?
And then further down, "being directly related to him or her."
All right.
And then the.
Being, right. And then in the last paragraph, to, uh, scratch "or administrator." Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? I'll abstain. Um, so it would be four zero one. So now the main motion is as amended, uh, for, to accept this, uh, policy as amended, uh, the Staff Ethics and Conflict Interest. All, uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll abstain, so it was four zero one. Okay, who's next?
Which ones you wanted in it? Crisis response? Uh, the crisis response, uh, the only change was to add a reference to, um, the Emergency Protocols flip chart, um, which was reviewed and approved by the group.
So at the end, number three, that's what's been added? Besides that, it's the same.
I, I must confess, maybe I'm in an ordinary mood or something, um, but the second sentence, I find the amount of specificity to be, um, unnecessary and. And I'm also, to me, it says, for those of you who don't have it in front of you, it says, "Crisis situations are defined as violent acts or emergencies causing serious injuries, or actual attempted or threatened suicide and sudden death situations." To me, a crisis can be one that threatens serious injuries. It doesn't actually have to have caused it. So it seems to me there's too much specificity, and at the very least, we should indicate that, that the violent acts or emergencies may cause or have caused. Something that broadens it to a greater extent than it is because I don't think all that specificity actually helps. In fact, I think it narrows it to too great an extent.
So i- is the, are you offering an amendment to add crisis situations may be defined as?
Crisis situations are defined as emergencies which may cause or are causing, I guess I would put "may cause or" in between emergencies and, and the word "causing." I'm doing this on the fly, but if that, Michelle, does that make sense the way I've amended it? Crisis situations are defined as violent acts or emergencies, the new words which would be, which may cause or are, and then continue.
So would you su- suggest that may after emergencies, Jeff?
I'm not married to my language. I'm just, I just think we need to broaden it somewhat because it's too specific. That's fine.
Threatened to or caused serious injuries.
Perhaps Michelle can read it as.
So that's my amendment, and, and Michelle, would you read it back for the sake of?
Well, hold, hold, hold.
I'm sorry.
Give me a second.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Point taken.
Crisis situations are defined as violent acts or emergencies which may cause or are causing serious injuries or actual attempted or threatened suicide and sudden death situations.
Uh, any more discussion on the amendment? My only problem with the amendment is, I, I, and I don't know how to correct it, so, um, to be honest with you, I didn't give it much thought until, um, you just brought it up, Jeff. But the more you define things, the more you leave yourself open for a situation that's not definable.
I completely agree. I don't even like the sentences I've amended it, but at least it's, I think I've improved it to be broader.
I, I, I just think that whenever you get into this degree of specificity, it's sure, sure in heck that something's gonna happen that's not covered under this definition.
Agreed.
I mean.
My real preference is to send it back.
Just wait till you get to the help ones.
Yeah.
What about dropping the last, that, that sentence? In other words, what happened, the history of this policy?
Do we have to, do we have to define it? I mean, if you stop at the, at the end of that first sentence, do you really have to go any further than that?
Right, exactly, because then, you know, it says that, um, we're gonna have a crisis response, and then down below, we have the procedures that are in those flip charts and so forth that covers all manner of things.
Fine with me, delete.
Delete the last sentence.
I'll consider that a friendly amendment.
Well, we have to vote on this amendment first, and your amendment.
I'm withdrawing it.
You're withdrawing it? Do I, the second withdrawn?
Second.
Okay. Um, so, go ahead, you wanna just throw it out?
Uh, my new amendment is to simply delete the second sentence.
So we're gonna have a policy of one sentence?
Brevity is the soul of wit.
I guess. Um.
I mean, it covers it, it.
We've got lots of procedures.
The school department will respond to crisis situations in a manner that ensures optimum safety for students and staff members.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Back up.
Go ahead, Kenny.
Mr. Swett made the motion for the amendment, which was seconded by Rachel. So Rachel needs to take her second back, not Rhonda.
Oh.
Is that, huh?
Yes.
On the.
I take the second back.
No, I take my second back.
Now I second his motion to with.
You have to withdraw it. Yes.
Yes.
I'm lost. The original amendment, who seconded, Mr. Swett?
I withdraw my second. I withdraw my second to the first amendment.
And you withdraw your first amendment, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you restate this new amendment? Man, are we getting all hung up on politics.
Delete the second sentence.
Alright, delete the second sentence. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on deleting the second sentence? Okay, is the committee okay with it? Rhonda, Rachel?
Yeah. I am.
Um, alright. Being no further discussion, we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor of deleting the second sentence as an amendment? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Five, zero, zero. And now that becomes the main motion, which would read, Weyham Public Schools Department will respond to crisis situations in a manner that ensures optimum safety for students and staff members.
Do we need a policy for that?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Next.
One comment.
Go ahead.
Rachel, we're going to have to review with the committee that also. Because we had a lengthy discussion about the, and I wasn't kidding about the medical procedures. We, we talked in great length about the specificity that are in, um, the medical policies. So Jeff, even before you bring it up, there is a lot of specific things in there defining, um, more procedure than it is policy. Um, and many of the things in there had to stay. So I just want to make sure, we just want to review both of those, Rachel, with the group, to make sure that there's someone, or nothing that, that is requiring, or something that's requiring us to keep it in there.
Okay, what's next?
Transportation of emergency safety and crisis response language. So we made changes, uh, to this, uh, policy. Um, and this is where we did get into, um, policy, um, procedure, how much language needs to be in there. Because it does, uh, there is another document, um, or another, there's a procedure that they follow. So, um, but we did make some slight changes to the language here.
Move approval.
Second. This is the transportation, emergency, safety, crisis response policy?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Next.
Transportation of drivers' children.
Okay, you want to report it out?
I will.
Okay.
This was several meetings ago. Um, and I think that I've, I've reported on this a couple times, where this policy has been brought up in front of the Policy Review Committee every single year, even though it wasn't its time to come in front of the committee. Um, it continues to be a, a debated policy. There are people on the Policy Review Committee this time, as well as in prior years, that are on both sides of fence when it comes to this. The overall policy talks to, um, allowing drivers to transport their own children. We tabled it the first time around, so, uh, Mr. Tetro could come and give us his recommendations, as well as doing research around other communities and policies. And what he came to us was the recommendation that you have in front of you. Again, we did debate it, we did update language, um, we tweaked it a bit. But at the end, we, we didn't have a unanimous vote. And I...
You did?
We did not have a unanimous vote. And just to be completely open with the committee, I'm one of the people that voted against the policy. But I'm not trying to sway anyone. Again, Mr. Tetro feels that, um, this is a policy that he could absolutely enforce. He doesn't believe that it is, um, causing any issues within the Transportation Department, is not putting any children at risk whatsoever. And would like the committee's support in enforcing, um, this policy, um, into the 2012 school year. Because I'm sure that it will come again, up again, next year.
Discussion?
Yes. I, I, I don't agree with it either. I, I have a few issues. One is, I, I know, I keep hearing, well, it could be a distraction, um...
So you do agree with it? You said you don't agree with it.
No, I don't agree with this. They're saying, I, I hear the arg, the arguments that I hear, it's like a, a child could be a distraction, but...
Just for the record, you agree with this?
No.
Okay.
No, and I, I don't agree with it because I, I just, one specific, only children five years of age or older.
Okay.
I want to know how many, I'd like to know how many bus drivers are driving their kids, what their ages are, if there have been any complaints, if there have been any issues. I've never heard of any.
There have been, and that was one of the reports that, um, that Mr. Tetro came with. And one of the changes that he did make because the policy was much more broad and just spoke to children. That one of the changes that he suggested was that it was, um, children five years or above or, um, currently enrolled in the Weyham School System. Those were the changes that he recommended. But, um, he has, um, not had, uh, any issues.
Go ahead, Rachel.
Sorry, I just wanted to answer that question.
So what would you...
Yeah. Well, my, my concern...
What is your, what is your prediction?
My concern is this, if there is a child that is under the age of five, that is riding the bus during the, for the, I, I don't see what the issue is. I don't think that, um, is it going to put a bus driver out of work? Which is one thing I will absolutely not support in any way. I won't put one bus driver out of, out of work right now. It, it just won't, I will never support that. So, I, is this, are there kids under the age of five? I, currently today, no.
So you're looking for more liberal policy, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I just...
Best discretion or no guideline at all?
When I go back when I was a kid and the bus drivers' kids rode the bus. It's been happening since the dawn of time. So I go, I, I don't, I think it's regulating ourselves into the inability to function, is what I'm, I'm looking at. But I, I just, m- my concern is, how is it going to affect the bus drivers? Bus drivers don't make, um, a massive amount of money. They're not, um, it's not an, an income level that I would consider conducive to be able, to be able to afford, um, daycare on, while working. You just... It doesn't work. And I think in this economic time, I, I just don't think it's an issue. If it's not an issue, there's no complaint, what are we doing? Are we just making a policy to make another policy? I think we have too many policies.
Well, this policy is already on the book, though.
But that's with the children of the five?
No. That's a change.
Or, let me just say that, that it, it says, so it says, the first sentence is, "only children five years of age or older who meet the following criteria." And then the first bullet says, "each child must be five or enrolled within the school, the Weyham School System." So it could be a child under five, but they have to be enrolled in the Weyham School System.
But how many programs are available for children under five to be enrolled?
We have a preschool for three, four-year-olds.
And today, there is no bus driver that will, th- this is, this is the world today. So this policy is world, there, there's not one bus driver that is driving right now that will fall outside of this policy.
Rachel?
I'm just kind of curious as to where the policy ended up coming from then. What, what was the, the drive behind it?
There was a policy. And it, the policy, was it four years or was it three years old? We, we had one that said...
At least four years old.
That they had either three or four, I'm not sure exactly.
I, I just remember somebody saying that this has been brought up all six years that they've been on...
And it has. The, the reason why some members of the, um, Policy Review Committee have been against the age limit that was there is that they felt with a young child who might require, uh, mom or dad's attention while they're supposed to be driving, that the driver would be distracted. And that, God forbid, if there was an accident, um, would the driver remember the responsibilities to all of the students on the bus? Or would they go with a natural inclination to their own child first? That, I believe that's where a lot of the angst came in discussing this particular policy. But Jeff then went and found, um, from some of the larger companies, a policy that he felt, gave him the right, if there was a child that was over five, you know, the last paragraph, it talks about this being a privilege. And the privilege may be denied to an employee who does not provide care and custody of a child. So if there is evidence that, for whatever reason, that child is distracting the driver and so forth, then the, um, manager can say that, "I'm sorry, you can no longer have your child on the bus." So it gives them some management rights there. But it does allow them, um, you know, if they're in fif- five years old and they're in kindergarten and they go half-day, um, maybe they ride with their parent in the morning. So, it, there's a little flexibility. And because no one would lose their courage of, we don't have anybody with a child under five that are riding with them.
Or, yeah, there might be someone under five, but they're enrolled in the Weyham School System.
Okay. So that's why we went along with it, I think, at the committee. That even the people that, um, would like it more liberal were okay with this. And then there were the others who really wanted, um, that no children of drivers were allowed to ride. So this was kind of a compromise between the two sides of the committee, if I'm stating it correctly.
You are. And the, the reason why there are, um, two, um, that are against this poly, just, just in general, is Dr. Venevich said it exactly, that, that it was the feeling that not, every single school bus driver cares for the children that are on their buses. I want to state that very clear, understand that. But that there, it has to do with perception and liability. And at the end of the day, no matter what, even if there was an accident and the bus driver took care of every single child on that bus, there is still perception and an, um, opportunity for the school system to be liable if something did happen. Or even if it didn't, that someone just said, "okay, I have a problem with it." And so, again, this is nothing about the bus drivers and their, um, their care for the children. It has to do, again, with perception and liability. And that's the reason why you see, um, two folks on, and I was one of them, that voted against this poly, just in, policy, just in general.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kenny.
So, it's pretty obvious that this is a gray area. I would like to table this for a meeting that we can have Mr. Tetro present with more information. I'd like to know how many this affects. You know, there are a lot of different parts to this. And it's something that the Policy Review Committee struggled with when I was the chair of that committee two years ago. So this is an annual thing. I'm not comfortable voting on this when we have members that, um, aren't in agreement with it. I, I'd like to have Mr. Tetro here for some question and answer before proceeding with this.
I have a motion to table.
Can I just say?
I have a second.
May I have further discussion?
Yep, absolutely.
Kenny, I, I do, just so you know, um, when Mr. P- Tetro came to the Policy Review, we, we tabled it, so then he could come to the Policy Review Committee. And, and again, that was one of the first questions that we asked, was, "does this affect any drivers by putting any of these new things in place?" And he said, "absolutely not." So I just wanted to let you know, if, if you want him to come here and say the same thing here, I, I would complete, I, I support that. I think that, though, even, just speaking for myself, even if Mr. Tetro comes and presents again, I will probably still be against this policy. So I just want to make sure that when the group is deciding on whether to table this or not, because I'm, I'm all for taking a vote tonight. But I, you know, for me, it is just, you know, everything that I've heard and I still have my opinion about liability.
Well, I, I think, may I say something too?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, like, the whole perception thing, I, I think that there's no possible way to policy perception. We can't do it. No matter what we do, no matter how careful we are, there's going to be a perception out there by somebody that's going to create trouble. It's just the, the way it is. And I, I have to say, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to defend our bus drivers. If sixty-five kids behind you isn't distraction enough, I don't think one more is going to be. I have to give our bus drivers credit. I think that they can handle it. It's, sixty-five, that's like distracting. I, I, and they manage it, and they do it well. And I, I have to say, I'm, I'm not saying the bussing is perfect. I'm sure we have issues, but, um, I think that when we, we cannot get into trying to policy perception because we'll never get there. We'll never be able to satisfy. We'll policy ourselves into extinction.
Right, but I, I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
And that's, you know, that's, I guess that's my concern.
Could we just take our comments and bring it to the chair so not everyone's speaking at the same time?
Sorry.
No, that's, no, that's alright, I'll give you the floor. Rhonda?
No, I apologize to you, I didn't mean to do that. Through you, um, to Rachel, I, I absolutely, um, agree with you when it comes to, um, the drivers and what they're able to handle. That's not the point of this whatsoever. So, perception, I agree with you. We can't create policies around perception. But absolutely, as a committee, it's our responsibility to take a look at every single policy and say, you know, what is our risk of liability if something does happen? And that's all I'm looking at here. So I do, through you, Mr. Chair, I do agree that, um, that our drivers are doing a phenomenal job and I will also defend them. But to me, um, speaking, it, it is just my, my feeling that, that having children, your own children on the bus, it does create, um, more of a distraction. Or it could, I'm sorry, not more, but it could, um, create more of a distraction.
Um, before we take a vote to table, um, the folks on the Policy Review Committee, because I'm not there, but I, I'd just like to get some clarity. In, in your opinions, those of you that were there, Dr. Venevich, you were there also, is, is this thing presented with the best possible information? Do we have all the information we need? How many people are involved? What, what the status is, what the opinions are with the drivers? And what the, we know what the recommendation was of Mr. Tetro. So I, I guess my question is, um, did the poli, did the Policy Review Committee come up with this policy with the best of information?
I believe so. I think it was only, at that meeting, was Dr. Venevich and myself were the only two at that meeting. My opinion is absolutely.
And if I can add, I mean, um, I believe almost everybody on this group has served at one time or another on the Policy Review Committee. And so there are ten people, and many of them have been on the Policy Review Committee, God bless them, for many years. And I recall, um, one particular member saying that each time they've reviewed this particular policy, there is not unanimity. And they would ask the transportation coordinator or, um, manager to be there. And they would then answer the questions, and that's what happened in this particular one. Mr. Tetro brought, um, some new language from policies that are used in other districts. And, um, the discussion was had, and now it comes before this group, which is the group to make the final decision. You know, by all means, if you feel you need more and you want Jeff to be here, not a problem. But, um, just like when we did the medical ones, we had the lead nurse come and answer the questions of the ten people on the Policy Review Committee so that they could, you know, um, do some of the wordsmithing and so forth, uh, and then bring it to this group. So, you know, I, I think we have discussed this, and we've gone over it. It was difficult, and we discussed it at two meetings.
Yeah, right. Okay, uh, let's, Jeff?
General comment. If we start making policies based upon the number of people that it's going to impact, one way or the other, instead of based on the merit of the policy in general, I think we run into trouble. I don't want to know how many drivers this impacts. I have to be concerned with how it impacts children and parents, not drivers. And I say that with the greatest respect for the drivers. And I, and I have met them, and I know some of them, and I think they do a great job. and I know some of them and I think they do a great job. But I can't take that into consideration when I'm making policy. Secondly, this policy, to me, almost negates itself by the following. It literally lists criteria that have to be true before this privilege can be granted. And four out of the six criteria are judgment calls. That concerns me greatly. It's a judgment call whether someone is capable of, of doing certain things, whether someone is ill, whether someone et cetera, et cetera. When you have a policy that requires somebody, the driver his or herself, the manager who's got lots of other things to do and may not know the child, I mean, you don't want four judgments, four separate judgments to have to be made in order to enforce a policy. It's just fraught with risk. So, and the final thing I'll say is, when I was Chairman of the Policy Review Committee during my first term, this was still there. And I'm concerned that we just keep tabling it and it just continues as a policy, which I think is wrong. So while I will certainly go along with tabling it one more, I think we finally need to make a decision, a definitive decision. Whatever it is, I'll live with it. But I can assure you that my amendment will be to simply not allow this, period, end of story.
Well, I can assure you under my chairmanship, it will not be kicked down the road. Um, all right, let, let's vote on this, this motion to table. Uh, bring it back to the, uh, Policy Review Committee. Uh, we heard the motion, there was a second to table it and, uh, and I, I don't know if we're going to bring it back to the Policy Review Committee, but basically it's to, uh, to bring the Director of Transportation to a meeting to discuss it. And in the meantime, I'm sure it can be discussed, um, at the Policy Review Committee level. All right, uh, all in favor of tabling this till a future date? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
No. All right, let's vote on it. So let's, let's vote on the policy. Um, is voted up or voted down? If voted down, it goes back to the Policy Review Committee. Is that correct?
Okay. Well, that's a, that's a good question. So if.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, wouldn't this, the one that's in place would remain in place?
And that's my concern.
Because you're the policy, you, you, policy that's in place.
Then we can, rather than table it, we just kick, we can kick it back for revision, for further revision to Policy Review Committee.
And there it will.
Well, I guess it's still tabled though, isn't it? See, when I said, when I said not to table it, I didn't want to, I didn't want to kill it completely. When you, when you table it, it's kind of like lost. But I, I want to bring it back, so that's why I voted against tabling. So maybe I voted wrong. But I wanted to go back to the Policy Review Committee. So if someone could make that motion, we could vote on that to kick this back to the Policy Review Committee.
It was your intent with your vote to send it back there?
That's correct.
So I guess the parliamentarian will have to say we have to withdraw all those motions.
No.
No?
No.
Because we took a vote, yes?
We took a vote to table it, I don't want to table it, I want it to go back to the Policy Review Committee.
You took a vote to table it so then Mr. Tetro could come in.
Right.
Right.
And, and we shot that down.
Which failed.
Right, we don't want Mr. Tetro. We want it to go back to the Policy Review Committee. That's why, I didn't think bringing Mr. Tetro here was going to do anything because I think the best information is already out there.
I agree with you.
So that's why I voted not to table it. So, but I, I do want it to go back to the Policy Review Committee because there's enough, there's enough concern over this policy that it will probably lose tonight and we'd have no policy. Because if it loses tonight, we have no policy on this at all.
Now, you do, you have the policy that's in place.
And that's my concern.
The one that's in place.
Until the next meeting.
Isn't that the policy we're reviewing, the policy that's in place?
No.
No.
I'm confused then.
No, we're, we're.
The chairman's confused, straighten me out. Go ahead, Jeff.
We're, we're reviewing an amendment, a change, a series of changes to the existing policy. If this fails, then the existing policy stands.
Which is more liberal than this one.
Correct.
That's why I want it to go back to the Policy Review Committee.
Would you accept a motion that would substantially change, oh, this policy? Or is that counter to the tradition of allowing those kinds of things to come from the Policy Review Committee?
The reason I want it to go back to the Policy Review Committee is a lot of what you said. A lot of these judgment calls, I don't know if that should be articulated in the policy itself. Make, make a decision whether or not we're going to allow children to be transported one way or the other. Um, and I think that there are enough variables, uh, on this, on this proposed policy that probably would warrant, believe it or not, another discussion at that level. Uh, and maybe they'll, maybe they'll submit this as it is. I don't know, that's entirely up to Policy Review Committee. But I think, um, I think there has been enough question about it to warrant another look at it. So that, that, but I can't make that motion because I'm the Chair. So whatever you guys want to do.
I have a question for the, are they co-chairs? You guys co-chairs of the policy?
Um.
But, but to table it would be sort of like to kill it.
Yeah, so if it goes back, then it can be reviewed for like the perception and make sure that the.
My question to the Chair of the Policy Review Committee is.
Which is Rachel.
Is that you, Rachel? Okay. Is, do you think if it was sent back to the Policy Review Committee, anything would change?
Well, I wasn't at that meeting. Because that, the, the, the dates of the meetings have now changed for me to attend because it was on a day I couldn't attend.
Then I'll ask Rhonda, do you think anything's going to change if we send it back?
Of course. I think that, that the group would take the feedback from the committee, um, and look at, um, we're really only talking about one piece, which is the second paragraph underneath statement. That is what I would want from this group is, is there anything else? I mean, besides, if I go back to the poli- if we go back to the Policy Review Committee and, and we say that, uh, it is the judgment of, um, the school committee that we really shouldn't have a poli- you know, that children shouldn't ride the buses, then that's what we would go back with and, and discuss and then see what the recommendation was. But right now, it is what I would feel that we would go back to them with is, right now, looking at the policy, that there are four bullets underneath the statement section that are judgment calls and the, and the school committee have an issue with that. So let's discuss that section. And then from that, probably read through the rest and, and see if there's anything else that we feel that you all might have an issue with. So I would ask, though, here, are there any other sections from any member here that you would want the Policy Review Committee to take a look at while we're there?
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of expediting this thing that has gone on for years.
Well, can I answer her question?
You're, you're, you're the Chair.
No, no, she asked a specific question on what has to go back.
Sure.
And I just wanted to make a brief statement on that is, yeah, on my part, I, I, I'm not convinced one way or the other on this issue in terms of the, whether or not we should allow children to be, to drive. I see, I see the merit on both sides.
Hopefully they should be able to drive.
I have to agree with you that children should not drive buses.
Ride, I'm sorry, ride, okay. Um, so you can, you can bring that, go ahead, Jeff.
I would like to make a motion, a simple motion. If it gets voted down, that's fine, and then it makes sense to go back. But if it gets voted, it's supported, then there's no point in going back. And so my, um, my motion would be for the policy to read, the Wareham School, the policy of the Wareham Public Schools is to not allow its employee parents to bring school, to br- to bring aboard their children while driving the bus. Period.
Do I hear a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, so that's, that means we're going to have a policy and that it makes sense to send it back.
I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask for a point of clarification?
Go ahead.
Because we have two members of the school committee and the Policy Review Committee that both voted against this for different reasons.
I didn't vote, because I wasn't there.
No, 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 it was myself and one other member of the Policy Review.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Rachel is, from what I'm gathering, believes that it should be a non-issue for bus drivers to have their children on the bus. And through you, Mr. Chair, Rhonda, on the other hand, feels that, correct me if I'm wrong, that is somewhat of a distraction.
I feel that there is an issue, yes.
So that, that's my point is, talk about a ball of confusion. I ca- I can't support this one. And none of us really have a clear.
I, I agree.
I vote that, I make a motion to. It go back to the Policy Review.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, send it back to the Policy Review for, for consideration. And can, can I be presumptuous enough to say that the next time this comes before this, we're going to have a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Uh, all in favor?
Who's second? Rhonda's second, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, zero. Oh, opposed? Four, four, one, zero. Okay, that took a long time. Sorry, guys. Thank you. All right, next.
Rachel, do you want to take one?
They're all, the, um, all the medical?
Yep.
Um, policy for measuring, um, body mass index. Oh, I didn't take that in order, I'm sorry. For the meeting.
Sorry. Which one do you want?
Do you want me to go, I'll go in order of the meeting minutes. So we have all the, have the meeting, emergency health procedures. Um, there were really no changes to this. I believe it was just, um, um, Sue Akins had, has a, has a, um, procedure book. It's basically go to the procedure book for each, um, medical, um, question, I guess, you could say. So there really was no changes to this policy.
Move and approve. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five, zero, zero, next.
Um, cleaning up spill of body fluids. Few, I just, um, we just made some, um, just kind of cleaned up the, the language a little bit on this. Um, under number six, what we changed, um, in the, in the writing was always wash hands with soap and water after any contact.
That, that's new language completely?
It was new language. Uh, what I, um, prior to that, it was, I think.
Is it just the, the italicized word?
It mentioned something about it, it was too.
Always.
Yeah, it was, it, the wording was off, the wording was just off. It was pretty common sense. Um, we deleted the last sentence in number six so, because it stated soap and water will kill HIV. We felt that that was, um, misleading and got rid of it. And I think the other one was, uh, the word Massachusetts at the bottom was missing the letter C, so we just added that. And, um, there was a deletion at the very end, um, that spoke about, uh, pregnant women. Um, we just didn't feel that we needed to specify a pregnancy. It was, uh, it was kind of redundant. So it was more all grammatical, um, changes that were made on that.
Need discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Kenny?
The, the words that are bolded, are those changes or is that just the way this?
Not all of it, that's probably.
There's all universal precautions?
Mm-hmm.
Are those changes?
No.
No.
They are, it's just the way.
Jeff?
Uh, number five currently reads, "All disposable materials, including gloves, must be discarded in a sealed plastic bag and immediately taken to a dumpster." I have a big problem with that. All body fluids, I think, have to be treated as infectious waste. I assure you, a hospital and a healthcare facility does. There is no way infectious waste should be disposed of, whether in a sealed plastic bag or not, in a dumpster. Now, the truth is, because it's unenforceable, that's exactly what happens at a private home. But the law can't enforce what happens at a private home. But I'm, at a, at a school, I'm sure there are regulations that say infectious waste can't be put into a dumpster because what goes into a dumpster can be taken out of a dumpster.
I actually mentioned that one and it, there isn't, I, I asked, I asked Sue.
When a nurse is treating a student, is there any provision for infectious waste disposal? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, my question is, can you please tell me then where are you going to put this?
Well, that's, that's, because at a healthcare institution, there's infectious waste and it's picked up and disposed of as infectious waste, which almost always means incineration. So my question to our superintendent is, if, if this occurs at, at one of our schools, does the school nurse have the capacity to, to dispose of infectious waste appropriately? Or is it just thrown in the garbage?
It is thrown in the garbage. It is thrown in the garbage into dumpsters that are locked, that do go to CMS, that do get incinerated. So this, the, the, the dumpsters are locked up. They're not accessible to people to go dig through.
That was one of the questions asked at the Policy Review.
So.
A locked dumpster that gets incinerated.
And we had two nurses there to report about practice.
So it doesn't go into a landfill, it gets incinerated.
No, it goes to CMS and it's incinerated.
And that's the, the law?
That is what they tell me is accepted procedures according to school nursing.
Who is they?
The nurses.
The nurses.
Mrs. Akins was there and so wasn't, uh, another nurse from another school.
Ken?
Well, maybe we need to look into it a little further instead of just keeping the bodily fluids in the, in the cafeteria or something. We can't put them out in the dumpster. Uh, hospitals and them have, um, bins and things where that stuff is disposed of and it's picked up by a hazmat or, or whatever the company is. So the school probably should follow those same type of safety procedures, um, other than throwing it, to Jeff's point, in a dumpster. But in the meantime, I would say that that is the safest way right now other than leaving it, lying around within, with, somewhere within the school. So until we can find out, maybe through, uh, talks with the hospital, how that is handled, maybe that's something that we need to look at, having someone in the medical profession come by and pick this, pick this up.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree with Kenny. Even if it goes into a locked dumps, locked dumpster, which is nice, there's a period of time where it sits somewhere until it goes to the locked dumpster. And if it's not segregated as infectious waste, then it means our children and staff are exposed to it, whether it's in a theoretically sealed plastic bag or not. Now, having said all that, I don't know what the regulations are. These aren't, these aren't healthcare institutions, which is where my expertise is. So if the regulations ignore the hazard associated with this that I see, then they ignore the hazard and we're doing what's appropriate. But I would like some comfort that the regulations specifically say that infectious waste can be handled the way we're handling it.
Mr. Chairman, if you wish, we can, um, look at the regulations and call the appropriate people.
You have something to add to this conversation?
In fact, at one point, I know that at the school level, the school nurses, um, have, you know, both the circular cans that you, with the pedal that you put, so they're not touching. And every school nurse's office, that's basically where if a child were to vomit or a child were to get sick, that it's contained in a sealed container.
But eventually that sealed container is emptied by a custodian who brings it out to the dumpster.
What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
But the custodians are also practicing. I mean, they, they're not running around, they got their gloves and they're, I mean, they know, I mean, they.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think that it's appropriate for the superintendent to go and see, to investigate this a little bit more with the school nurses, see what the policy is, or not the policy, but to see, um, if there's more, right, more that can be done. Because they do have a separate book, um, that we're going to be going through here, the emergency health procedures, that, um, that has many of the procedures, not just the policy. But we'll see if any changes need to be made to this. But instead of us going back to the Policy Review Committee, I think that we should probably just get a, um, response back from the superintendent.
I will investigate and put back.
All right, let's just not take any action on this tonight. Anyone opposed to that?
Nope.
Measuring Body Mass Index, which is that new, um, another wonderful state regulation. Any, I, so did, which policy, we had a policy, this was, um, Rhonda, correct me. We made changes to this policy, but it wasn't a policy we had.
No, this is a new policy. No, this is a new policy that came to us from, from the superintendent because of the new legislation that came down. Um, we debated for a while on whether we even needed this, um, because there are other things that are coming down from the state where we didn't need it, but we felt that this was, um, important to have because of, uh, the parents, there's gonna be a lot of questions about this. So, not only did we want to make sure that there was a policy in place of, of how this would be done, um, and what parents could do, um, but then also around the communication of it. So, we actually did get to review a communication that's gonna go out to parents. We had an opportunity to make comments to that. Um, so, there was debate whether to even have this policy or not, but based on, um, the sensitivity of this new legislation that's come down, we thought it was appropriate to have a policy in place in case there were any questions from parents.
Thank you. Uh, just one question to anyone that wants to answer it. What is the implementation date for this new law?
It has to be implemented by the end of the year.
By the end of this year, the school year?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Just for clarification on that answer. Does that mean we have to have measured all of the first, fourth, seventh, and tenth graders by the end of this year? Or that we can begin measuring at next year?
By June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, it has to be implemented. Now-
That means-
Weighing children and measuring their height has been occurring for the last twenty years as part of public health, um, regulations. The only difference is that we now need to, um, feed those numbers into the calculator and come up with BMI and then to send a prescribed letter to parents with that information. And the last paragraph, the first paragraph is the law. The second paragraph is where it tells you how we will do it. And in the back of the form is the letter, um, that was going home to parents to tell them about this.
And then the handout is for, there's like a, a mailing, a pamphlet that goes, that goes to the home.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this, I have zero interest in the individual data that this will generate, meaning on each and any in given student. But, is this data, uh, going to be aggregated so that we could, for example, calculate the average median BMI for our first, fourth, seventh, and tenth graders?
Can it, if the question, Mr. Chairman, it, it can be, yes.
Because it seems to me that those four grades represent about a thousand children, plus or minus, roughly. That would create some very robust data. And, of course, the first time we get it, we're not sure what to, what it means. It's a baseline, if you will, of data. But, if we saw, for example, that over a period of, say, five years, that BMI for, the average BMI for our system was getting lower versus getting higher, et cetera, that would tell us something about the physical education programs that we have in our schools. It's an indicator. It's not a perfect indicator for, for a lot of reasons. It doesn't, as usual, there are a lot of other factors. But, I, for one, think it's an indicator of the physical education program that we have. And I would like it aggregated.
Anyone else? Um-
That was popular.
I, I, to be quite honest, I have, I have a multitude of problems with this. I had a multitude of problems when it came out. Um, I, I just think that this is, this is over the top. I understand about obesity, I understand about nutrition, I understand about, uh, physical fitness, I understand about getting them off the couch, I understand about, uh, getting them active. But, um, from where I'm sitting, w- w- we're, we're basically, um, you know, in, in, in a place that I don't really think that we need to be in, in terms of public schools. Um, I don't like it, I think it's evasive, I think it's, it's, uh, it's Big Brother's watching and, um, if we have to implement it, we have to implement it. But, I hate everything about it. And I, I, I hate everything about it, in, in fact, to, uh, to label kids, uh, to put another stigma on them, to put another stigma on parents, um, to, 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 even to draw conclusions on our curriculum, whether or not our curriculum is doing the job based on, um, a body mass index. So, uh, I, I just hate it. And I know there's nothing I can do about it, but I just hate it.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, I do agree with you. If it was, um, something that we rolled out here and wear him. So, if we did it in a way where we were, um, including parents and, um, and the capturing of this data, um, we, I don't know what the state's gonna do yet. So, they're asking us to do this, will they even be able to aggregate it? Or is it all gonna go up there and then all of a sudden fly off to Neverland? So, I think that, I, I agree that that would be useful data, just in general, about, um, how our food system is doing, you know. There are lots of things that we could do with the data, just as long as it was one hundred percent secure and protected and all of that. I wish that there was another way that we could collect that data besides the state coming down and saying, "We just want it." So, I think that, again, that this is, this is coming down to us, it's a requirement, we have to do it. So, we thought that it was, um, best if we had a policy in place. So, if parents did have an issue with it, then they did, they understood that, um, you know, where they could go, what questions that they could ask, um, and if they wanted to refuse. They do have the right to refuse.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me be a hundred percent clear. If we had a choice about whether we collected this data, we got a whole lot better things to do with our time. But, we don't. So, as long as we're gonna be forced to collect the data and we can get a robust data set, I think there's some value in looking at it as a baseline and as a trend. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, but, any other discussion?
Yeah, can, can we collect this data and put it in the dumpster instead of the bodily waste?
Yes.
Um, okay, all those, uh, no further discussion, let's vote on this policy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
We need a motion.
Oh, we, oh, yeah, we need a motion.
So moved.
Sorry.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, five zero zero. Um, next.
Oh, I skipped over this, I'm sorry. Administration of Medication. Again, on this, um, there were a lot of more grammatical changes. Um, do you want me to run through each one?
Sure.
These are all, uh, and they were, um, from, these were all recommended by Sue. She, I mean, she was there going over all of this with us, um.
Go ahead, Rachel.
I'm just trying to figure where the first one came from. Uh, number one. We added the, uh, last sentence to number one under, um, physician parent guardian responsibility. And it, uh, on recommendation from Sue, uh, we added, "The nurse will document the quantity of medication received on the medication administration log." That is her, what she does anyway. Uh, she has a log that she keeps it all on.
Question?
No, I was just gonna say through you, what, what she said, it wasn't in the policy. Um, they, it's not being done across all schools. And there are issues, they wanted to make sure that, um, you know, the, one of the first things they, that they tried to, um, implement is that, you know, the parents are bringing in the medication. Um, but if it's the parents or the students that are bringing in, that they are counted in front of the students and then they are logged. So, then if, you know, three or four days, there is, uh, you know, discussion about, "No, there were really fifty pills, no, you only gave me twenty-five." This was just a way to basically state that, that the nurses will log across the board, um, the medication when it does come into the school.
Oh, I think that's a good idea, too, because, um, oh, go ahead, finish, Rachel, I'll comment later, go ahead.
Number two, um, we added an A between, signed by both, and parent slash guardian. I think that was just a cleanup of the, the wording.
Yeah.
To make sure that it was in, it was gonna be-
Guardian, I think, guardian was not in it.
Guardian was not in it, so.
Right, we added guardian and that, in some cases, they're not going to be two parents, so that's the reason why we put an A in front of it.
Okay, Rachel?
Uh, page five, which does go off of the actual policy, but it was a cleanup, just the same. We just had to clean up a, a few things on the back, um, it's the, in the school listings. Um, we wrote on the top, "Dear parent slash guardian." And then on the listing of the, of the school nurses, we, uh, cleaned it up, made sure all the schools were included and that the, the teach, the nurses' names were, uh, spelled properly. Let me see the corrections there. And-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there were, there were a few grammatical, um, mistakes.
I couldn't find it. Go ahead, Rachel.
And then, uh, we also, we removed implementation of life-threatening allergy policy from this policy to review as a separate policy at a later meeting.
Does that cover it?
That covers it.
Uh, discussion? Rhonda?
Move and approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve. Um, I, I just, um, I, I just wanna, I just wanna say one thing before we vote. Um, I, I like the idea of, um, a, a system-wide log of the, of the medications. Speaking through, uh, experience, uh, when I was a building administrator, that there were cases where, um, students were coming in with medication, given to the school nurse because she dispensed all medication. But, uh, um, it didn't match what mom and dad gave the kids because, um, there was a, a hot market, I don't know why, back then, for some of those medications. And so, there was always a discrepancy, there was a discrepancy in many cases of the number of pills that mom and dad gave the child and how many pills actually arrived at the school. So, having a log provides, uh, uh, checks and balance, which I think is important. Any other discussion?
I have reason to believe there's some typos.
Okay.
With, with your approval, Mr. Chairman, could, could we be alerted as to where they are?
Okay.
Joan?
Where are you, uh, Joan? Last page, okay?
And under Mrs. Stakes here, she just had a phone upgrade, so her extension now is five one five eight.
Thank you, that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alright, there is a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As corrected, um, opposed, five zero zero. What's next?
That's the policy.
Okay.
It was only because he pushed off the radio.
What'd you say, Rhonda?
No.
Um, update on school improvement goals, Principal Siemens. So, thank you for being patient, Joan.
And she has her, her parent council with her as well.
And, uh, you can identify your parents, if you would?
I was going to.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna thank the three parents that I have here this evening from my school council who braved the roads and came out in the storm. Uh, maybe it's a night away for me, children, but I thank you for coming. So, Jamie Pelletier, Ann Cody, and Jerry Young. So, I'm going to go through, uh, just a brief review of what we've done so far to attain our school improvement goal. Starting with literacy, um, all the classrooms in the district have priority standards that we have established. They're on posters, they're posted in the classroom, they're utilized in lesson planning by the teachers. So, not only do they go to these standards, which come from the math frameworks, um, but the teachers are also teaching these standards to the children. I was in a fourth grade class this past week doing an observation and the teacher went right over to the priority standard and, and explained to the children what that meant and how did that relate to the lessons that they were doing that particular day. It was, and it was a math lesson. Um, so, the children are understanding, you know, when the teacher's teaching you math, where is she getting her ideas from? So, um, and I've seen that in, in several classrooms. We have a reading coach that works with teachers to improve instruction for what we call tier two students. Those are students who need a little bit extra work, um, with literacy, in this case. So, the coaches are going into the classroom, they're modeling lessons for the teachers. Sometimes they're working with a small group of children, um, to try to improve student achievement. Our Title I power professionals and our reading interventionist work with students in the library for what we call tier three instruction, which is another thirty minutes of instruction they get above and beyond their, um, classroom instruction. And that is done five days a week. We do it during what we call our intervention block, which, again, is thirty minutes. And those students are there for a period of four to six weeks. We monitor them, we do some assessments, we see if they've, uh, reached the skills that they need to reach and go back into the, the regular classroom. Um, sometimes they stay for another six weeks, sometimes new children are identified for needing some extra support. Uh, we're required to have supplemental education services, so that's tutoring we provide for students who are, um, income eligible. And we also have a care program for students, which is MCAS-based. And those students can come, uh, it's a parent choice, it could be two days, it could be four days. So, that's another program that we have to try to work with literacy needs of our students to improve. Uh, the PTA has done this for the second year now. Um, it's called Blast Into Books. It's a reading program where the students are asked to read at home at night. Um, the teachers also have students reading at night, so it can kinda work for both issues. They keep a log of their minutes and once they have reached two hundred and forty minutes, they return their log sheets to the teacher. And if you walk through Minnetonka Forest, um, and even at, uh, the other elementary schools, they have bulletin boards and the students get to move their places along the world. So, um, and at Hammond, I believe, it's a jungle theme, so we kinda tailor it to, uh, to the students. But, it's been great. They did this last year, they give us a total of the minutes, class to class, and, um, we have some very competitive teachers who try to get their students motivated to read because they wanna be number one. Um, we also have newsletters that are sent out to the teachers by our Title I coaches, um, just various points, websites, what's happening, helpful hints. And Minnetonka Forest this past Monday completed the NAPE assessment. Um, it was administered to all grade four students. Uh, two years ago, when we had the NAPE assessment, it, they did a random sampling of grade four students, but as it was described to me, they ran, randomly chose to test all fourth graders at Minnetonka. So, um, everybody went through that particular assessment on Monday and that went well. So, what do we still have left to do, because this is only January? Uh, we wanna complete the creation of benchmark assessments and this is something that, um, the coaches have been working on and we expect that to be completed by June. We have to administer the grade test in June. We administered that at the beginning of the year in September. Now, we need to do a post-test in June. We are completing the DIBELS assessment, the Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Literacy Skills. That's what that stands for. Um, we have assessments right now that we'll be doing with the students. Um, they've been happening in the classroom, the coaches have been going in doing that, some of the teachers are doing it as well. So, we have a February benchmark and then we'll do it again, May and June. Um, that also helps to identify students who may be at risk for decoding, for fluency, comprehension, things like that. We'll complete the Blast Into Books program and host the award ceremony. We did that last year and that was fabulous, the students loved that. And then we'll work with all stakeholders on professional development for a response to intervention. And this is not something new that we're doing, but it's a new avenue that the district is seeking. Um, we'll have an overview for staff and training during the early release in April. So, the district administrators are currently working on that. Um, and we're looking to purchase a new phonics program. We've had a couple of various companies come in and do presentations 'cause we wanna have one consistent piece that we're doing across all the elementary schools. So, hopefully in July, we can purchase that. And, of course, we have our MCAS and English Language Arts, which will be in March. So, we're working on schedules and getting that out to families. We have summative informative assessments that we give our students in order to- We have summative informative assessments that we give our students in order to get the data, to analyze the data, to figure out where are the students, where do they need to be. Um, as I mentioned, we have DIBELS, the Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Literacy Skills, we do that three times a year, KDA three. We have developmental reading assessment called DRA, that gives us an idea of how students are reading, how are they comprehending, what level are they at. Uh, we use computer-based management program called CBM, and we use that to track, um, the progress monitoring of our Title One students, so the coaches using that, um, in Title One. We have the benchmark test that we've been starting to give throughout the year. The grade is a formal test, we gave that in September, we'll do it again in June. The reading book, Houghton Mifflin, we have weekly skills or theme units that the teachers are giving to the students, and then of course, teacher observation is always an important assessment piece. In math, we have a brand-new program this year called Everyday Math, um, seeing some great things, when you walk into the classroom, the math that the, some of these students are doing is, is just amazing. Um, and the teachers are working hard, we've had professional development, that I'll mention in a little bit, um, to get them comfortable using it. Again, priority standards are established, they're posted in the classrooms for math as well. The math coach works with teachers to improve instruction for Tier Two students. Title One Power Professionals and the interventionists are working with a group of students in the library also. For Tier Three, again, that's five days a week, it's a separate time block from the ELA. Our care program is offered in math as well for students. Um, this year, because our reading program went so well, the PTA developed a Blast Into Math program, um, and that was an effort to help our, our scores in math, you know, especially with MCAS and AYP. So, that's another incentive program that we're working with. Um, our math coach does a wonderful job monitoring our data, talking to the teachers about data, what does the data mean, where do we need to go from here? Um, and Study Island is a technology program, we use it at school, and the students also can go home and log on at home, and it's just games and things that they're doing to help support the math skills. Math coach sends out monthly articles to, um, the staff, newsletters are sent out, um, through the district coaches, they all get together and they alternate their newsletters. We've had training on the Everyday Math program for power professionals as well, because they're helping our students learn, and we felt it was important for them to, um, be in on some of the training. Uh, we've had training for the Everyday Math program for our special education staff, 'cause they're working with the same, um, curriculum for students. The, um, consulting with the reading math interventionist to provide consistent training, so everyone's working together. Our math coach is, um, consulting with the interventionist at Hammond to make sure that what we're doing at Minnet, we're also enforcing at, um, Hammond, and then we're, they meet weekly to, um, across the district. So, we're making sure that we're doing similar things across the district. And again, the math coach provides model lessons to staff. What do we still need to do? Um, administer the GPA assessment, we did it in September, now we need to do it in June, so we can have, it's a pre-imposed test, so we can look at that data. Um, complete the professional development for Everyday Math, we've had a series of trainings through our in-service days, we have another one coming up in June. We'll complete the Blast Into Math program by the PTA and have a ceremony for that. Finish the creation of the math benchmarks as well, that should be done by May and June, and we have math, MCAS, um, in May. For our summative and for, informative assessments, Everyday Math assessments that are in the books, those the teachers are doing, and they even have daily ones called math boxes. So, if the teacher teaches a new lesson, there's a, a page where, right away, it gives an assessment of the students to see if they understood that particular lesson, and it's a quick check for the teachers in order to see if they understood that. There's also some review of lessons that were previously taught, and there's a couple of examples of lessons coming up, and the teacher has an idea of, of a baseline to see if students know what's coming, or does he or she really need to put a lot more emphasis on that particular skill. Um, again, we use CBM in our progress monitoring, we're using our benchmark assessments and teacher observations. Under professional development, although this is not a separate goal we have, it's all integrated. Uh, we've given workshops for teachers on Six Plus One Traits Writing Program, we're in our second year of that implementation, kindergarten through grade five. We have forty minutes of collaboration meetings with grade-level staff. Um, I advocated for having a substitute come in for the day, and this year through the scheduling, all the teachers have the same prep period. Uh, we can't mandate what they do with their prep period, but what this allows is for them all to get together. Uh, we had one where the math coach sat down with all of them, reviewed the data, um, assessments, they looked at the Common Core standards, and then a substitute went into the classroom later that day, so the teacher who missed the prep was able to make that up, so they still had their planning period. Um, and they appreciated that time, so we'll be doing that for ELA, and we'll do it periodically, maybe every six weeks or so, as, as time needs. Um, MIMO is a demonstration using Everyday Math, MIMO is the new technology, um, that we just received. We've had workshops in data, 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 and I know that's your favorite word, Dr. Sylvia, from previous year's data. And we've had in-service workshops for literacy for grades three through five as well. Um, in-service workshops throughout the year for Everyday Math, um, we have a new science program for grades three through five, so the teachers have had workshops on, on that program. We also have offered our own, um, in-service workshops for the National Association for the Education of Young Children, which we summarize as NIAACs. Um, Hammond has gone through a reaccreditation pro, program, um, we've been accredited for the past five years, and every five years you have to renew that. So, the last day before, um, the winter vacation in December, we had two assessors that came out and went through all of the rackets, and we'll know within ninety days if we've been reaccredited. Um, we also need to go through this process for the East Wareham School. We go it through kindergarten, because of the kindergarten, kindergarten grant we have, we're going through it for, um, East, we did have it before for preschool, but when you close the school, you're no longer accredited, so we have to start that process back up. And there's also been social-emotional learning training for the power professionals at the East Wareham School through the Center on the Social and Emotional Foundations for Early Learning, SEFL is what they call it. Um, and Mrs. Morgan was instrumental in providing that training for the power professionals as well. One of the, um, goals we have on our school improvement plan is MCAS. So, for ELA, last year at Minnet Forest, we made AYP in all the categories, aggregate and subgroups. Our CPI went from eighty-one point nine to eighty-three point six. We made AYP based on meeting our improvement target. We're still in improvement year one for subgroups. When, when we make AYP again, our status will change to no status, because in order to come off the improvement list, you have to have two years of making AYP in a row, and that's how you change the status. We've done that before, and we know we can do it again. In math, we did not make AYP in all of our categories, aggregate and subgroups. Our CPI had gone down seventy-nine point two to seventy-six point six. We did make AYP in the aggregate the year before in math, and because of that, we're only identified as improvement year one for subgroups. Um, we're really looking forward, since we have this new math program, on how that's going to affect our scores. Technology, um, we've been trying to work a lot with technology this year, it is a specific goal we have in our plan. We've had training on using the document camera, again, new, new equipment that we were able to purchase. Um, training on using the MIMO equipment, training on using technology portion of Everyday Math online, and that, we are very fortunate that the district was able to purchase the online access for our staff. Um, we use technology for the, um, computer-based management assessments, 'cause the students go into the computer lab and they can take that assessment online. Um, the school website is updated frequently, you can see current events, um, my monthly newsletter is always posted on the school website, so if you ever need some reading, it's right there, you'll know what's happening in our schools. And several of our teachers have their own webpages, so there's links to their webpages as well that you can look at. Um, Everyday Math has the online access, as I mentioned, and we were able to purchase the equipment, such as the document cameras and the MIMO, with PTA funds and with Makepeace grant funds, um, and it also helped us to purchase more smartboards. So, we've done a lot, I think, in this past year with technology. We purchased two laptops for Hammond and East, purchased two laptops for Minnet Forest. Um, one of the laptops can be used to Skype, because I know that is a, a goal we'd like to do, uh, with our Cape Verde partners when they have that capability. So, now we have a laptop that actually has a webcam that will be able to do that. We purchased desktop computers to begin replacement process, um, and we started with the office computers, it seemed once I put the purchase order in, then everybody's computer started, you know, breaking down. So, um, the computers are old, and when you only have a couple thousand dollars, it doesn't purchase a whole lot, but at least it's a start, and we're trying. Lexia is a reading program that's also used, the teachers use it, they have a disk they put into the computer, and it's another reading, um, technology piece for the students to use. Rainforest dot math is a website that we use in the computer lab as another math program for students, and they love the computer, they love technology, and it makes math fun to them. Study Island, as I mentioned before, we use it in the computer lab, we can also use this program for grades three through five to develop some of the benchmarks we've done. So, again, the students go into the computer lab during their study skills time, they take this quick assessment, and Everyday Math is used in school, um, it can also be used at home. Next goal we have is community. Uh, we use the Global Connect System for family notification, they received it all yesterday when, uh, the school committee meeting was canceled, they received it today when school was canceled, we do reminders for a lot of reasons. Um, the local media is always informed about school events, whether it's the television, we contact the newspaper to come in when we have things going on, so we can promote things. If the, um, photographers or the news reporters can't come to the school, we'll take the pictures, we'll write an article, and then we'll submit it to the newspapers as well. Again, my newsletters are posted on the school website for the entire community, see, not just our school. We have a partnership with Coastline Elderly Services for a foster grandparent program, and this has been happening for several years. Um, this is, I believe, my sixth year at Minnet Forest, and it was in place even before I came to Minnet Forest. Um, so Grandma Enos comes in periodically and works with students, and everybody loves her. And then advertise and visit the preschool centers in town to promote kindergarten registration, so we keep in close contact with the private preschools, we have, um, countdown to kindergarten, and we try to work with them on what they need to do to have their students ready for school. And that will all be in my March newsletter about kindergarten registration. Resources, final goal that we have in the school improvement plan. Um, as you know from the last school committee meeting, we refreshed our application for the Math School Building Authority for a renovation and expansion of Minnet Forest, keeping our fingers crossed on that one. Um, we had to relocate two grade one classrooms at Minnet to Hammond because of classroom space. We have district programs at each elementary school, um, there are special education programs. Um, in the Hammond, we have a transitional grade one program that also has students from the Deacon side of town. So, when we see that there's a need, we try to establish programs to maximize our, our teaching staff. We have just about, um, established a playground committee to explore new playground structures for East Wareham and Hammond Schools. So, we did have, um, one meeting last week, and we'll go forth with that. And then the NIAAC accreditation process, um, completed for Hammond, and we should be hearing soon about that. I'm sure you have questions.
Thank you very much, Principal Siemens. Um, and again, to all of the people that came tonight, um, it's unfortunate that we, uh, had a meet tonight, because I remember on our snow days, even though you pay in June, but it's kinda nice to cuddle up to the fireplace and have a nice evening at home, and we've forced you out tonight. Uh, thank you again for coming. Uh, any questions at all on the presentation?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What if you don't have a fireplace?
What if you don't have a-
On the, um, the interventionist and the, the powers, how, how many interventionists are, are at, at your school?
At Minnet Forest, I have a reading coach, a math coach, and one interventionist that does both reading and math, and then there's two power professionals.
So-
And then at Hammond, we, I have one, part-time.
All right. So, the powers are more of a, of an aid, where the interventionists can get involved in the actual teaching?
Right, and the power professionals work in the library with the interventionist, so they're directly supervised by the interventionist.
On the, um, the Houghton Mifflin, you said that was a book, do you have the, uh, software that, that, the program for that?
Not with that particular series, um, it's probably about four or five years old now, but that is the basal reader that we're using for that one.
I wasn't sure what that was, um, but I went online, and it seems like a pretty good program, and as you said, when kids are involved with computers and things like that, um, seems to help. It was sorta like, are you smarter than a third grader? Well, I flunked. And I think I have one more, Joan. You're not up and running yet on Skype, is anyone else at that level using that? To your knowledge, or is that in the high school, Doctor, through you, Mr. Chairman?
Miss Miranda?
It's currently being used in the high school by several high school teachers, um, in the middle school as well, we purchased an entire, um, you know, equipment for it, they're currently using it. This past year, purchased the Minnet, one of the Minnet School, one of the Hammond, as well as the Deacon School. Those teachers, we're meeting actually next week to, um, with the, uh, Roosevelt's, 'cause we've been partnering with Roosevelt Junior High School and DuBett, um, and we're bringing teachers in, um, so they'll be, they'll be, they'll be doing it. We're also looking at expanding this stuff in terms of global education, that could be a, a presentation, but they are using it.
I learned it so I could communicate with my daughter at college, she's just a clickaway now.
It seems like interesting technology, whether, and it, it could help, uh, you know, a lot of the students. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Rhonda?
Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Um, around literacy and, and mathematics, um, the, the reading coaches, how, if approved, um, how do you see, um, enhancing these programs with implementing RTI? Um, I know that you are doing response to intervention on a smaller scale now, but how are you looking to, um, enhance those programs if it's approved in twenty twelve for RTI?
We'll have more staff that can work with and in the classrooms, because you'll have your classroom teachers, you'll have your coaches, and special education will all be the group of core people that can assist and, um, and help with the students. RTI is one part of it, um, we're looking at the supervision, supervision evaluation part of, um, not just with the coaches, but instructional leaders. They're the people that can be in the classroom, watching, um, the staff, doing model lessons, which, which is going to help the instruction as well. So, we've, as you said, we've done RTI on a small scale, where the teachers have Tier One, they're doing Tier Two, which is small group instruction, but it's kinda isolated, the coaches are coming in, they're doing the instruction, the students are being pulled out for Tier Three. I just see it more as a cohesive unit of everybody working together all at once, rather than having these isolated pieces.
Can you tell me, based on implementing RTI on a smaller scale, what kind of results that you've seen?
We've seen improvement, the first year we tried to do this, um, not calling it RTI, but with our intervention blocks, we've only focused on literacy, and we saw improvement with that, but then we saw a math lag. So, then we added math. Um, we tried to do two things in one block, and that didn't work. So, then we went to two separate blocks, and we're finding that having two identified blocks, one for reading, one for math, is really giving more support to the students, and, uh, we can really focus on those particular skills. So, having the RTI come in, where we have the overview that will be given to the teachers, they'll fully understand what it is and what it means, because we're not fully implementing RTI as it's meant to be. Um, so, we're going to provide the training for the staff for that to happen before we go ahead and implement it, 'cause we want them to be comfortable with that. So, I just see it as a, um, as being effective.
Okay.
Look, go ahead.
Uh... The, uh, the newsletters, I, I saw that you have, uh, um, the newsletter that you put up on your website, and I'm sorry, I don't know, answer this question, but on your website, do you have a place where our parents can sign up to receive, you know, so you can push data out? Or, because as you know, the, the committee that I just emailed you about, um, that's one of the, um, that's one of the pieces of information that I'm gonna ask in a survey to each one of the members is, um, you know, how is information currently being pushed out? Are we capturing email addresses, um, cell phone numbers, so that we can do texting, things like that? Does the, your website today currently have a place for parents to sign up so we can push information out? Does your website today currently have a place for parents to sign up so we can push information out to them through email?
We used to have what was called a district listserv and I still get an update every month or so where that used to happen. I don't know if that's active anymore. So when parents did sign up, um, my newsletter would automatically go to them. Or if there was a no school announcement, it would automatically go to them. I'd have to check with the technology department to see if that's still an active link.
Dr. Vanage, do you know if the listserv's current, still exists tonight?
I do not believe that it is active at this time. I think Kerry, I mean, technology coordinator has, is doing a survey about how many homes have internet capability. And, um, we have many through Power School. Many parents can sign up and do get, um, reports either about students' grades, progress reports online as well as the food service department sends out reminders about bills and things like that online. But as far as capturing more of it, we're waiting for the results of the survey.
Yeah, because I think that you can, and this is just a quick comment, that, you know, I, I don't mind from, you know, when I get a text, a phone call and an email. So even if we're hitting them, you know, even if we're doing all three, even though everyone might not have one form, it's still good to, to do all of that.
I think Global Connect has the capability for email, I just don't know if we've used. I don't know how often we've utilized that.
Uh, and then the only other thing is, one of the comments that you made was that you can't make, mandate what teachers do during their prep time? Are there suggestions, I mean encouragement, suggestions on what is done during that time?
We encourage them to collaborate all the time and many do. They'll get together when they're doing their planning. Just as the principal, I can't say to them, I want all of you to meet with me during your prep time and let's go over these assessments. Sometimes they're willing to do that, but I can't mandate it. But as I said, they typically are planning together. But by having a substitute go in every six weeks or so, then I can pull them together to do what I feel we need to do. And it still allows them to have the planning time.
Okay, and if there are problems with that, there's another way that you go about, I'm sure, fixing that problem? Okay, thank you very much.
Jeff?
Thank you. Let's, you're doing these assessments and you get immediate feedback as to whether the students have gotten it. Let's assume you have a class of twenty, twenty-two kids and three or four kids didn't get it. What exactly happens at that point?
That's a perfect time during our intervention block where the teacher can then take that particular skill the students didn't do well on and remediate that with those group of students, whether it's the classroom teacher, if they're going down to the library, if they're a tier three student, that interventionist could also do that. But that's a perfect reason why we have intervention block is to review those skills that the students are not getting.
So when would that intervention take place?
Could be that day, it could be the next day. All the teachers also can pull, um, groups of students off to the side of the room and go over it that day or the next day. It happens in a, in a couple of ways.
Is, would it ever occur later than twenty-four hours?
It could, depending on scheduling and.
It could.
We try not to, but.
That doesn't sound optimal.
It doesn't happen that often and it's more than twenty-four hours, but again, you have to look at, it depends on the skill and, and getting to that particular teacher. Because sometimes we have our teams, like in grade four, we have team teaching, so we have to kind of coordinate that.
With the resources you expect to have next year, would the likelihood of that intervention occurring within twenty-four hours or even earlier increase?
I believe so because you'll have more staff that can work with that.
And would the RTI program almost mandate that?
It would because, like I said, when you have more people going in, working with the students and, and the identified skills that we have, we're trying to capture them right, right on the onset.
This blast program?
Blast into books, blast into math.
Right, that takes place outside of the school?
Correct.
Ideally, I assume it takes place with parents.
Yes.
But it doesn't have to.
Correct.
Do you have any indication of the percentage of parents that are actually involved with their kids in these, in these two blast programs?
I do, I don't have the numbers with me because.
Ballpark. Fifty, seventy, thirty percent?
You're doing Hammond, you know how of, like, of the classrooms? No, like how many parents are participating in the program with their students?
Every, every parent has one, you have to have a parent's signature that those children read the allotted number. Every law, every law has to have a parent or guardian's signature in order for them to move across.
They've been doing that for quite a while, right? I remember that when mine.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Good for you, good for you, Jamie.
At least a hundred percent of the parents know that the program exists and that their children are involved, whether they're actually reading and doing math with them, nobody really knows. And then, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, since we've got these parents here, I, I would love to know how you feel the school is doing, whether the improvement plan is working, whether the school is meeting your children's needs, et cetera. Any of you, all of you?
I would say that I think the improvement plan, you know, we always try often to come up with explanations and stuff, but as you know, the, I mean, the resources are not always there financially. From what I understand from the RTI, I think that would be an excellent program to get in because with the, with the pull-up groups and, you know, it's small numbers. I mean, there are the kids that always look through the cracks, I mean, you have the kids that are way up here, you know, the kids that are down here and then you have the middle one. And, you know, we can't always get to those that are not what I would call tier three, but just not quite to be put into that pull-up. I think the RTI, in, in question to what you had said earlier, how fast do you think that's happening? I think with the RTI, it will happen quicker because there'll be that teacher in there or that parent special who's gone, okay, you know, Joe, Bobby and Sue didn't get it, I'm going to bring them over here. They don't have to leave the classroom now because they have, they're not in that tier three, but they've noticed, recognized and maybe they can work with them on that program a little. You know, just to me, I know for myself sometimes I don't understand and I'll say, okay, let's read the directions again. And that's all he needed was just that one more time to be playing and then he studied some. So I think that, I mean, as far as my children, I feel like the schools always strive to, to give them what they needed. And if I've ever had a problem, I've always felt that, with Miss Siemens, that she's always looked at the problem and helped me.
Anne, any comments?
I, I have a child that is going to still benefit from the RTI. He doesn't quite qualify for an IEP, but he is having a hard time in kindergarten and I'm worried about retention. And I know that if there was more, because at Hammond, they only have one hard time person that comes in and pulls up. And I know that that would just a hundred percent help him. I just, I'm so afraid that he's going to slip through the cracks because he almost gets an IEP, but he's just a little bit ahead and then I'm afraid in third grade, it's going to all hit. So I think that this program, it would just be wonderful for him. To have him step aside more times, one-on-one, even if it is, like, like I said. Sometimes even with my third grader, it's just re-reading the directions. Like they go so, sometimes they go so fast that he doesn't get it at the first time, but if someone's helping him, he just needs to read the directions.
Jerry?
Ideally, every child with an IEP, that would be wonderful, but it's public education and we do what we can do, but I, I think the school tries and does the best it can with what it has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rachel?
No, I'm good.
A lot, a couple of things that I was going to ask have already been asked, but I, I'm just curious about a couple of things only because I'm not sure, okay? On the NAEP, the National Assessment, was that a sample years ago? Did you do all of the fourth graders?
Two years ago, um, only Minnet Forest was selected and they only chose a small group of fourth grade students.
Right, because that's the way it was when I was the principal.
Right, I was surprised this year when they said all of my fourth graders were being tested. And Deacon's also went through the NAEP, but they only had a random selection of students.
So it varies on the selection and the process as deemed necessary by the national people, correct? So they tell you how it's going. The reason I ask that is because if all fourth graders took the NAEP, you know, there, there is a, a wonderful opportunity, to use that word again, to do a correlational study. Because if all fourth graders took it and all fourth graders are going to take the MCAS, it stands to reason that we could really do a good correlational study on the two tests.
We don't get any results from NAEP, none at all.
That's right, we don't.
So we have no idea how our particular fourth grade student did.
So, when, when they talk about the state of Massachusetts being number one in the NAEP, we can't tell you about our children because they don't give us any data. That's right, I forgot about that, so a correlational study would be absolutely impossible.
Right.
Just a quick question, why?
Why what?
Why don't they provide us with the, the results if we're having our children take the time to take it?
That's a good question, right, your congressman?
The reason why I'm asking is I'm hoping that even if it's good or bad, that there is an answer to that, that we've asked and.
In, in previous times, they did a statistical grouping that would be significant from a particular grade and particular schools. So that they, instead of testing every fourth grader in the country to come up with, um, how well they are achieving, they do this random sampling and then come up with the number. And it's about how the state is doing comparison to the rest of the country and how the country is doing. So it's a measure of that, it is not designed to measure individual student performance.
Okay, but during the test, they do take the information on where these children are being tested, correct? Do you have to write this?
Yeah, they, they have, when they come, they get it from the state. They have the student numbers, they have the names of the students that they want to test.
Okay.
But it was usually done as a sample, so I was really surprised they did all of them. Unfavorable light. Principal Siemens, how, how close are we in your estimation? And I don't want to pin you down to the month and the day. How, how close are you, are we in your estimation to developing those formative assess, those common school-wide assessments? To be fully implemented through the entire school, through all the grades?
We've been doing that now, um, even as we've developed.
In all grades and also, in all grades and all of the?
The benchmark assessments, as we've developed them, we've given them.
Okay.
Right away.
I guess, so you're telling me that we have common assessments in every grade, formative assessments in every grade in math and, uh, language arts, is that correct?
Right, and I had listed them on my slide, whether it was the Houghton Mifflin for reading, everyday math has assessments, was given the benchmark assessments, um.
But those are school-wide, they're all getting the same assessments?
The benchmark assessments are district-wide, because we've got.
Right.
And they are formative assessments currently in place.
School-wide, by grade?
Yes.
And they're currently being used?
Yes.
Okay, here's my second question. Has there been any thought at your level, at the building level, not at the district level, at the building level, to do cooperative evaluations of those assessments?
Can you explain what you mean?
Well, it's, it, well, it would be a little bit harder for you because probably in your, in, in the elementary grades, they probably wouldn't be performance-based as opposed to up in the middle of the years in the high school. But, um, I think that when teachers grade tests together, they can see patterns and pick up points of information that can be shared either at a team meeting or grade alike meeting. And so, uh, when I was doing consulting work in Providence in the inner city, one of the things that we put was cooperative, we had school-wide assessments, they were more performance-based and it was at the secondary and, at middle school level, it wasn't at the elementary level. But I can see it happening at the elementary level. When you have a group of professionals looking at the same student work, you may, you may get several perspectives on that student work and recognize not just problem areas, but also areas of achievement. So, has there been any thought at all given to doing that cooperatively?
Yes, um, and the open response writing is the first area that we look at.
There's a perfect example.
Um, and by having these collaboration times where the teachers will meet together, that's one of the goals is they look at writing and then they, they score it with a rubric and several teachers will do that scoring and then they'll talk about it.
That's, that's excellent.
And then as they give the assessments, they're now looking and talking about the data collectively. So yes, we have.
Very good. And, and the other thing too is, you know, we, we don't say it enough, is the involvement of the community in the development of a school improvement plan. And you've got three of your school council here today and it's school councils across the district that, that are working hand in hand with the administrators and developing and, and implementing these school, uh, school improvement plans. And my hat goes off to them, um, because, uh, they care and they're involved and we can't ask for anything more. I just wish that we had a little bit more involvement. So, uh, hats off to you folks and maybe you can get some recruits to come in.
Good luck with that.
But, uh, thank you again for being here tonight and for what you do. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Joan, thank you.
Okay, next order of business, um, school budget, Dr. Venovich?
Yes, um, I have a, um, I guess it's a recommendation to make. Um, I recommend that the school committee approve a non-net school budget of one million, four hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and a net school spending budget of twenty-seven million, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars for fiscal two twelve. Um, and as a information to, uh, for people, my intent is for us to vote this this evening, understanding that there is an ad hoc committee that is working with FinCom representatives, Board of Selectmen and hopefully, school committee representation. And if an agreement is reached, we will, I will come back to this committee and ask you to reconsider this vote. But we need to turn something in by February first and we're just starting those discussions and therefore I ask for the approval of the numbers that I've mentioned.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
All right, could I get a recommendation from the budget subcommittee?
At the time that the town administrator put his budget together, he did not yet have the superintendent's preliminary numbers. Since that time, we now have, um, the preliminary numbers for, from the superintendent and we have the governor's cherry sheet numbers, which came out yesterday. When you combine the cherry sheet numbers, the school's numbers and the rest of the town's numbers, you have a budget that is out of balance by approximately two and a half million dollars. Depending on how you play with the numbers, that's the ballpark. So there is a serious problem, which is why this ad hoc committee is such an important, um, group to, uh, to begin its work. I think, given the fact that we've, um, undoubtedly have some cuts to make on the part of the school budget, and I repeat that for everybody to understand, unfortunately, despite the great work done by the school principals and the department heads, there's no question in my mind that the two and a half million dollars is just too big a nut for it to be solved, uh, without some cuts. Nevertheless, I don't know what the size of those cuts should be, will be, when this group of ad hoc people complete their work, but I'm certain there will be some. So therefore, I think it's, it makes sense to, to go with the numbers that the superintendent has recommended and then come back at some point when ideally, this ad hoc committee will have come together, solve the problem in the best interest of the entire town and everybody will be, have reached some consensus and then we will go and, and sell to the community whatever the steps that are necessary to, to bring that budget into balance. So that's a long way of saying, and I'm sure my colleague on the committee will have her own thoughts, that's a long way of saying that I support the superintendent's recommendation. Wanda?
I also su- uh, support the superintendent's rec-
I also su- uh, support the superintendent's recommendation. The main reason I do is that we have, um, since the very beginning, um, heard from the schools, from the superintendents, from the, I mean, from the superintendent, the administration, about the needs of the school. I do have to agree with Jeff also, that when taking a look at what, what it looks like right now, um, we do, there are some hard choices that are going to have to be made. And, um, going into this committee, it has always been our, um, our goal to go in with an open mind, to hear from committee members, um, that will be part of this ad, ad, ad hoc committee around their ideas. Um, we had, um, at our meeting with the finance committee, we said it very loud and clear and over and over again, that we, um, we wanted to hear from them, um, on any ideas that they had. Um, and we feel that it's important that all members going into this understand that, um, to really come with their best ideas. Um, this is not easy work, and taking a look at the two budgets and the, the gap that are, uh, that is between this one and the town, um, there, there is, um, we just, we need the smartest people in the room to, um, come with their best ideas, so then we can get in there, we can debate them, um, and we can come up with the best recommendation, um, coming back to this group, as well as I'm sure the Board of Selectmen will, and the finance committee will go back to their groups. Um, so that's what I would ask. Um, so I do agree at this point, um, that we do need to, um, uh, approve or vote on the numbers presented by the superintendent, um, but I do feel, as my colleague does, that we will be coming back, um, to the group, um, once the ad hoc group has a chance to, um, to review it together.
Rachel? Um, I don't, is Kenny all right? Is, uh, I hate to take the photo on him, but I don't see it. Huh?
He might be on the phone with the weather.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I think that, um... Mr. Fons, anything to say on the budget? Any comments?
Were you waiting for me?
Yeah. Um, the only thing I have to say is, um, I think everyone recognizes the, the difficulty of the, of the process, and, uh, there, there's been a, a, a level of, um, discussion about the, this ad hoc, but, um, we'll, we'll talk about that in the new business. But, uh, I think we, under the law, we have to, you know, accept the, the superintendent's recommendation, um, and re, and not to rehash, um, the whole thing again. But from where I sit, this is not pie in the sky. Uh, we recognize the reality, uh, but it's, it's a basic needs budget. Um, there are some areas of reduction, but there are some areas of increase. And, uh, I'm of the mindset that if there has to be cuts in these numbers, that, uh, there's going to be pain involved with it at some, at some degree. So, um, to think that we're going to be able to cut these numbers at some point in time without any pain, um, is, is just not accurate. So, uh, with that being said, I want to entertain a motion.
We actually need three separate, uh, votes. We need one for non-net.
Correct.
One for net, and then one for the total.
For the overall budget, correct. So right now, let's entertain a motion on the non-net of one million four hundred ninety thousand two hundred and sixty-eight.
Some moves.
I have a motion and a second to, um, accept the non-net school budget of one million four hundred ninety thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero zero. Uh, now, I would entertain a motion for, uh, net school spending of twenty-seven thousand ninety-one...
Million.
Not, twenty-seven million ninety-one thousand four hundred and thirteen.
Second.
I have a s- a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, I will abstain, four zero one. And now, we will take a motion on the combined budget of...
Twenty-eight million five hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Some moves.
Jeff? You look perplexed, is there a problem with that number?
No.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero zero. Uh, next order of business, Dr. Benovich, reduction of the eleven school budget.
Yes, in your package, um, this has to do with the vote that was taken at town meeting that reduced our budget by four hundred and seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars from what had been approved at the previous April town meeting. And, uh, you will see the categories where we are taking the money from. That will be backfilled with the edujobs money that we received. Um, and the reason for the accounts that you see before you is because if they were teachers, we would have to pay an additional nine percent to the mass teachers' retirement system. So by doing the accounts that we've done, we save ourselves nine additional percent that we don't have to pay. That's, so, um, using Jeff's word of fungible, um, it's why, um, you see the custodians, you know, edujobs were mostly teaching positions, but where we're taking the money from are custodial positions.
Okay, uh, uh, can we have a motion to, uh, a, approve these, um, reductions as presented?
Some moves.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve these reductions in the eleven budget as presented. Any discussion? Jeff?
I, I just think it should be clear exactly how this number was, was developed, how it became four hundred and seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Um...
Chair floor.
There, there was a reduction of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, and an addition of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, from free cash. So the, the net of those two actions was four hundred and seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. That is precisely how it actually occurred on town meeting floor. That was the motion. So it's not a mystery to anybody.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? I want to entertain a motion, I mean, I want to entertain a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero zero. Uh, Ms. Miranda? Monthly financial statements? What's that?
Good evening, everyone. Um, the approach I'd like to take now that we've, we're using this new format, um, with the budget, um, in its presentation, uh, really for the public, um, I just briefly want to review that these accounts now are organized by major categories. And these categories are the categories that, um, the Department of Education actually, um, gives us, and... So, in administration, I have absolutely, unless you have a question, I'm going to go right to, you know, certain accounts where I do want to give you some information on it. So in the administration account, um, I mean, the variances are not very specific. The, um, actually, the, the, the bottom line is that currently, where we are in our budget is point three six percent, um, less, uh, than, or we were last year, this, this previous period. You will see some variances in some different, you know, kinds of accounts, but there really is not, um, what I would consider a significant variance yet. Next, we have our instructional leadership and, uh, technology accounts. I believe, I did want to, uh, remind folks that it, the reorganization, when you look at, uh, the department heads, curriculum leaders and facilitators, the twenty-one, twenty, and twen- twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, and fifteen, um, again, that variance is always going to be there because of the reorganization that we did with the department heads at the high school. Teaching services, um, classroom, two-three oh five is one that I really pay attention to, because it really is the bulk of our budget. Um, and so, it's, it's largest line out, is classroom, you know, teachers especially. And that, you know, we're looking at sixty point twenty-one, sixty point twenty-seven, so we're, we're okay. Any questions on any of these accounts?
Anna, as long as you're in the twenty-ones, could you comment on twenty-one ten? I don't think it was listed. But last year at this time, we had fifty-three percent remaining, and now we have thirty-nine percent remaining.
Which slide are you talking about, twenty-one?
Well, it wasn't listed on, on the first slide or this slide, but it's in the twenty-two thousand category, so I thought you might want to comment on it.
Twenty-one ten, oh, district leadership?
It's called curriculum, it's called curriculum director.
Well, it's, it's basically those, those are the, all the, um, funds from the student services, specific, um, office budget and curriculum. That student services and curriculum is what's considered, that's that function. It's very misleading, they call it district-wide leadership, you know?
You're, you're telling me the curriculum director line item can, is, has student services expenses in it?
No, no, that, that's a combination of both, of those.
I think that's what I just said.
Yeah.
And you said no.
Because twenty-one hundred and twenty-one ten. See, there are two, so, uh, one would be student services and the other function, Jeff, would be curriculum. There are two, two whole...
Well, I wasn't actually asking about twenty-one hundred. I was asking about twenty-one ten. That's, that's called curriculum director. Last year, there were fifty-three, there was fifty-three percent remaining at this time, and this year, there's thirty-nine percent remaining at that time, at this time.
Are you looking at the...
I'm sorry, so Anna, he's looking at that.
He's looking at the...
He's looking at the...
That's fine, okay.
I, I said upfront, it wasn't on your overhead, but it was part of the two thousand group.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. But so I'm looking for this, this comp, you know, because these are, basically have been compiled, combined.
I mean, if you prefer to go through all the slides and then come back...
No, no, I, I can just go right to this, right here, here we go.
Whatever you prefer, it's fine with me.
Um, you're looking at that differ, oh, fifty-three to the thirty-nine, mainly because we've increased, um, the professional development, um, lines within the curriculum office. That was, that was like almost a thirty-something thousand increase. It went up to ninety-something this year, it was sixty-something last year. That's the, the real big variance.
Twenty-one ten was reduced this year, and for FY eleven, the account, the requested amount was reduced. So the percentage of what we spend on professional development and curriculum committee had actually increased, because the total number, I believe, was reduced from what we had last year in that line item. But that account paid for teachers' expenses.
Well, i- is that your way of saying it was reduced, but your level of spending hasn't changed?
The level of sp- I, I don't have the numbers in front of me to give you a, a exact answer. The level of spending has increased, but not sustained level of spending.
Maybe the simplest question is, do you expect to spend more than your budget in that line item at the end of the year?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions about teaching services? Um, professional student services, um, no concerns, guidance, uh, twenty-seven hundred and twenty-seven ten, as I told you previously, we're going to see that variance right through to the end, because we actually picked up the, uh, co-op adjustment counselor's salary, um, which had been paid for by a grant in, uh, previous years, then was added. So that's, that's a major, you know, additional expense to that line item, um, as well as some stipend, uh, work for another guidance counselor who also serves in two other roles. So that also, uh, increased that line item. In other student services, um, as you can see, really no concerns with the variances at all. Professional development, um, we now see that in that, uh, teachers and substitutes professional development, again, um, this is indicative of a lot of training that has happened in early. We, we spent the money more upfront this year than we had in, in, in the past, in terms of, there's a lot of fall training. And again, it's related to, you know, the adoption of the math series, adoption, uh, you know, furthering English language arts, the writing program, six trades writing. So that's really, that's the variance that you see there. In instructional materials, paper, pencils, and supplies, um, we, we have more remaining this year, mainly because some of the, for example, um, supplies, workbooks, or, or supplementary materials that would have normally been purchased with this account, we were able to purchase some with grant monies from the hour grant monies, you know, the previous year. Um, and also pre-buy-on-paper also helped to, you know, um, decrease the level of spending in those accounts. The, um, instructional technology and software, um, we will, we're really moving ahead. We've just, um, as of a couple of days ago, selected a firm that's going to be working with our, um, updating the infrastructure and the networks. And, um, and that variance that you see right now is, have, we've already had, we spent some monies in previously. Uh, but the bulk of it will be occurring, you know, very soon. And that's really that difference. Operations and maintenance, um, boy, what a difference one month can make. Uh, and I'm seeing it in the, uh, the heating and in the utilities. Um, you know, previous month, we were ahead of the game. So, you know, you just look at one really cold, and, and I'm, I'm going to anticipate that, you know, we're still going to be, uh, we'll, we'll get hit as well, um, in February. I mean, I don't think this pattern, doesn't look like it's changing. So that's really the variance that you see there. Um, other than that, don't have any concerns. Um, I mean, am I worried that we haven't planned enough? No. Um, doing projections, even at the increase throughout the heating season, we will not deplete those reserves. We will come very close to the end, but we will not, you know, deplete the account. I'm not, uh, I don't have those concerns of that.
Anna, just one question through you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, forty-two, twenty, maintenance of buildings. Last year, we were at thirty percent, now we're down to nineteen percent. Um, that, that's left. I know that there's been some issues over the last couple of weeks. Are we concerned about that line item and that we would go over budget there?
Um, traditionally, we usually do. We, we've, um, have ended the year in deficit in maintenance of buildings. Um, this year, the FY eleven budget actually reflects a little increase, um, hoping to address that. But what you said was very true, we have had some major, for example, this past weekend at the high school, um, between Sunday to Monday, uh, major, two, two leaks, major pipes flooding, that type of thing. Um, but, I mean, whether, I, you think whether or not we're concerned, no. I, I'm not concerned, because the, even though you see that difference, that's really not that much of a difference. I think we also did more maintenance projects, I think the custodians also, um, in the fall. Um, this year, we did many more enhancements and, and ma- they got them done, as opposed to some been waiting for late in April and May. So that's another reason why that account is, you know, more work has happened.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, it did. I think that the, we go over every year in that account, bothers me a little bit, and we just want to know, part of the budget subcommittee, how, you know, what percentage we think that we're going to go over by, where, you know, we might.
It's so difficult to tell because it's, you know, anything can happen, you know.
No, I understand that, but where is that?
We get hit with more extraordinary expense and it just, yeah.
How are we going to make up for it, I think is the real question.
But then what I would do is that we do look, and I would end up encumbering, you know, funds in other accounts to cover that deficit, so the budget will not be in deficit ultimately, no.
What's that?
Yeah.
Jeff?
I circled the same account, but I actually drew some comfort from the very next line down.
Yeah, I saw that too.
So, because, which is the maintenance of equipment, because, and that's almost forty percent favorable.
Yeah.
So if you net the two, you're actually, you're actually favorable, so.
And the two really do support each other.
They sound, they do sound pretty volatile at the moment.
Right. I, I'm sorry, just one point of clarification. The bills that we sign here, are those already in here or no? That's going to be in next month, correct? That would be taken out after we sign?
There's probably only two schedules in there that are not included in these figures.
Okay.
Because I ran this report January twentieth, so if you look at your bills, the cover sheet, there's a date on it, the date that then I transferred it, approved it, transferred it, or posted it.
Okay.
So only, anything prior to January twenty is here, is reflected in the printout.
Okay.
Anything else? Go ahead. Miranda, what's that? Next item.
Any questions? Basically, you know, so summary again, as I said, you can see the figures for where we are with our LEA for the net and non-net pupil trans and the vehicle replacement. Little lessen transportation, forty-four percent supposed to forty-eight the year before. But overall, again, point three-six percentage points isn't really something to be too concerned.
Thank you. Jeff?
I noticed the very last account, payments to member collaboratives, it's essentially nothing has been spent, and last year, we had spent thirty-five percent of it, and it's a big number. I mean, we have four hundred and fifty thousand as an ending balance. Bob, you have any comment on that?
Yeah, the, what you'll see is, if you look, you have to look at ninety-three hundred, ninety-four hundred together, ninety-four hundred in the collaborative account, and it's simply your billing cycle. So they have to spend because billing has not been out to the collaboratives.
So we never accrue?
Right, and the reason you see a major difference between ninety-three hundred, ninety-four hundred, in ninety-three hundred, we encumber, so for private schools, if we have a tuition of sixty thousand dollars, we encumber the full sixty thousand dollars for that particular student upfront, and then we'll pull from encumbrance. We don't do that with collaborative accounts.
So, in my private accounting mind, what you're saying is ninety-three hundred is a pretty good indicator.
Yes.
Whereas ninety-four hundred is not a good indicator at all.
Yes, and the reason for that is we're more likely to have movement through the collaborative programs than we would through the private programs. So encumbering money for collaborative programs, just what you just said, is generally not a good indicator when you encumber. When I have a student that's in a private school, they tend to stay at private school through the year, and so we encumber it, so we know what we're really working with in terms of really bill dollars.
Nevertheless, do you?
If you encumber to the collaboratives, then that's not a good indicator.
So nevertheless, do you, do you have, are you optimistic you might actually have some surplus there to help with the rest of the budget?
As we get here late January, yes.
I won't hold you to it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're in good shape. Again, I look at those two accounts combined, I think that we're in good shape at this point, and as we've discussed in the FY twelve budget, some of the hits that we have there won't be captured until 'twelve, but at this point, I'm sure we're in good shape.
Thank you. What's that?
Anything else? Miranda, does that conclude it?
That's it for now.
Nice. Thank you very much. At this point in time.
Acceptance of gifts.
Okay, acceptance of gifts, Dr. Benovic?
Yes. Okay. I would like to recommend the following gifts be accepted with thanks. Twenty HP compact computers from the U.S. Army to be used in the ROTC program and computer lab at Wareham High School. These computers have been recommended by Principal Palladino and the Coordinator of Technology, Terry P. Filippo.
Any question? On the table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero.
And I'd like to recommend acceptance of one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars from the Maloney Youth Foundation to the Hammond School towards reading his fundamental books for students at both Hammond and the East Wareham Schools.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, we have some other business, and just to clarify, we usually put all of our business on the agenda, but we need to take a vote tonight on this ad hoc committee because I understand it's meeting next week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. That's right. Time flies when having fun. So it falls within the framework of forty-eight hours and a necessary vote. I would like to just to get briefly any insights as to whether we should participate or not participate, and to what levels we should participate. I'd like to get some guidance from the people that have been involved in this budget thing all along. So Jeff, what do you say to this?
Well, I commend Rhonda for the idea that, that the impetus was her suggestion a week ago at the hearing. I commend the town administrator for following through and making it happen. I commend the chairman of the Board of Selectmen for her recent note in which she supported it and thought it was a good idea. I think it's going to be a very difficult process. I understand there's a past precedent for this, where there was a very difficult situation and people came together around, around the problem and managed to come away with some consensus. I think the town would be extremely well-served if on town meeting floor, they heard three boards and the superintendent of schools and the town administrator all come together behind a, behind a budget. So I think, given the fact that we have a two and a half million dollar problem or thereabouts, I think it's an excellent idea, and I support it.
Rhonda?
I think I said, most of my comments when we were talking about the budget and being approved and the numbers that we wanted to recommend today, just around, I do believe that this committee is a good idea. I would like to take credit for it, but I think all I did was, it was actually from our last meeting, it came from the audience, and I don't know who did, who actually said it, but the idea came out that basically said, we know that there is a problem here. It would be great if everyone got in a room and, and really figured it out, and I think that then would happen from there, is we just, we tried to put some parameters around it, let's have two members from each one of the teams. So I think I, I was glad that that suggestion was made because I haven't been part of Wareham politics for a while, I mean, you know, for, for a long time, but since I've been here or been part of the school committee, I haven't had a chance to be part of a collaborative group discussing an issue. And I think that it is, it's an issue for all of us, not just the school committee, and where the town is with the cuts that are coming down from the state, I don't think that it's just the town administrator's problem. I think that this is an opportunity for folks that have decided to give their time to improving this town to come together, and like I said before, truly come in there with ideas that you're okay with being debated, being challenged, respectful debate, and then hopefully we can all come out of there with an agreement of what needs to happen, because I think that we all want the best for this town. So I do think it's a good idea that, that we do go forward and be part of this committee, and I'm really hopeful for the best that the group that is voted into that room will come out with a recommendation that is in the best interest of all the citizens of Wareham, including our children.
Okay. Any other comment on whether we should or shouldn't participate? I think we should participate. Does anyone have a notion as to what the composition would be from the school committee?
I'd be happy to participate because my current role is chairman of the budget subcommittee, and I would love to have my colleague join me, but it's up to the committee.
Okay, well, as chair, I'll, you know, it's subject to my appointments, but I don't have a better idea, so I, I want to thank you both for volunteering, and.
Well, Jeff volunteered me, but I would definitely volunteer, I'll definitely volunteer myself, but I do want to hear from, from Rachel or from Kenny if they have any burning desire to be on it. You know, I'm completely open to. I wanted to ask.
I wouldn't say it that way, no. I'm not the numbers person, you don't want me in there crunching numbers.
I'd be happy to be part of this committee, absolutely.
Just a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chair.
Yeah, sure.
I would assume that this ad hoc committee is subject to the open meeting laws and that these meetings are open to the public, otherwise I can't support it. It's not a meeting that's going to be at a closed door with just a group of people, correct?
Jeff?
I confess that I read something today, and I can't remember where I read it, but it's that for some reason, the meeting tomorrow at ten o'clock apparently is not going to be open. I don't know why, but that all future meetings would be. If it was up to me, they'd all be open, and when I get there tomorrow morning, I'll, guess I'll be, have it explained to me why it's not. But I think transparency should be the order of the day, and I think listening to people civilly and respectfully debate each other on how to solve a problem is something that citizens of this town should hear. But I, I can't speak for it, and I'm, there is no chairman of this committee. The organizational issues is on the agenda for tomorrow, so we'll see what happens, but it's ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
Can I answer your question?
Well, I would like one of our representatives of the school committee to bring that point that, that it is open to the public, at least from my point of view, that it, that it should be, and not meetings behind closed doors, because somehow, when you have those type of meetings, the message by the time it gets out is not what was actually said behind closed doors. And it should have a meeting with public participation, because they are the people that are voting, you know, at the town, town meetings.
The only thing I'll say is I will be happy to communicate that message. It's how I feel as well. The only comment I would make is that I, I think if you opened it up to public participation throughout the process, it might be a little bit chaotic, but I certainly think if we come to some consensus.
Right.
That would be the moment to open it up to public participation so that we could take that into consideration before we actually go back to our respective boards, because that ultimately is what's going to happen. We hopefully come to a consensus, then we have to take it back to our full boards and get their consensus before anything of value has really happened. So, but your point is well-taken, and I assure you, I will communicate that.
Anything else to be said?
I'm so sorry. Just, and I just wanted to let the committee know that tomorrow, I will not be able to attend that meeting, but all future meetings, I will be able to attend, just so everyone knows.
Thank you, Rhonda. Being of further discussion, let's get a motion to participate in the ag-hoc, ad hoc process on the budget. Let's attain a motion.
So moved.
Go here a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero. If it's okay with the committee, I would like to officially appoint Mr. Swett and Ms. Bogan to participate as our representative. Is that all right, Rhonda?
Aye.
Yeah, just as long as Vugan, but absolutely.
Vugan.
I've heard of pushing somebody to the spine.
I stand corrected as usual.
Rhonda B.
Yeah, Rhonda B is good from now on.
In light of the ad hoc and working with this, I think that at this point in time, it's probably appropriate just to disband the budget subcommittee at this time, so I think I will do that, and certainly we can resurrect it if we have to, but I, I just don't think that we need that right now, so we'll just go with the ad hoc committee and see where it goes. I would, however, highly recommend that the superintendent have some kind of an advisory committee on the budget that he could work with, and, you know, so that he can get some support and also some input, so I would leave that up to him. The next order of new business, and I don't know how this is going to go over, probably like a lead balloon. I'm of the opinion we need to meet next Wednesday, and I'm going to tell you why. We've got some committee reports that we haven't done. We need to bring Mr. Tatro in for a variety of reasons, including policy matters, and we need to review the bids on the buses and transportation. And that would give us two meetings in February. We'd have a meeting on February second, and we'd have a meeting on February ninth. I, I just think we need it. I think, I think particularly, we need to devote some time to a report on the bids, so I think we need it, but I'll certainly respect the will of the board.
I'm fine with it.
Any comments? Jeff?
Anna can confirm this for me, but I have an athletic.
We were just saying that.
Athletic committee meeting now. I suppose it's possible we could do that before, but I have, just pointing that out is that, because that was scheduled for six o'clock.
How long do they usually take?
Well, yeah, I think he, I think he has two, so I.
I mean, could we start it earlier? Could you, with the two of you? If we were to start like five-thirty, maybe?
That's the only problem I have, so.
So if you start your meeting at five-thirty, then you'll probably be over for the seven o'clock.
And we could perhaps do it here for convenience and timing. Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Yeah, that's a lead balloon.
I'll send an email out to the committee.
And honestly, that just pulls me out of the house every single night next week.
So.
Kenny?
That, that's five meetings in a row, right?
Yep, we're going for the record. Well, I told you why, you know, it's up to you guys.
So this, is it a timeframe that it can't wait till the night?
Yeah.
To you, Mr. Chairman, to?
Doesn't matter to me, I'm probably going to be thrown out anyways. Throw.
I'm here more than Jamie.
Is that by your wife or the voters?
Both.
No, you, you have to make a recommendation to the vendors. But I don't know what the date is. What have you guys got to do? Vote it in or vote it out?
I'm, I'm retired, and my wife doesn't like me that much, so, you know, I think I'll be happy to defer to Kenny.
Through you, Mr. Chair, could we have it, but that is the only agenda item?
Yeah.
So then it's a shortened meeting?
Well, I wa, yeah.
Never short.
Well, I know, I know. And believe it or not, I was trying to get the program of studies on the meeting, but that's not going to be ready. It's up to you guys. If you don't want to have it, we won't have it. I'm just giving you my best guess.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other, because I'm going to be out that night anyway.
It is hard for me to be out every night of the week. I'm the only one there, so it does make it difficult.
I hear you. Well.
But I'm just, it's just me, so.
We need a vote. Somebody make a motion. Vote it up or down.
Well, I'll make a motion, but I've got to abstain to the motion.
Oh, why?
Because it doesn't matter to me.
Oh, well, let's just not have it, because this is ridiculous. Okay, I move we adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Need a second?
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned.